Good evening and welcome to the May eleventh meeting of the Scarborough Planning Board. Can we all rise for the Pledge of Legions, please?
My Pledge of Legions is unified by the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation under God, in the principle of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Karen, you want to do the roll, please?
Ms. Ogless?
Here.
Mr. McGee?
Here.
Mr. Beale?
Here.
Mr. Fellows?
Here.
Mr. DuPont?
Yep.
And Mr. Wood?
Here. Okay, I got a couple of comments before we begin the formal agenda. Number one, in the absence of, uh, Mr. Fellows, Ms. Ogless is a voting member this evening. Number two, item five, Frank Marston, uh, fifty-five Spring Street, has requested that, uh, this be tabled, so, uh, that item has been tabled until the future meeting. And third, we've got a pretty long agenda, so I want to keep things going at as rapid a rate as possible, not to say that everybody won't have an opportunity to speak and, uh, say whatever they wish to say, but I'd like to get through all the items tonight, because I know how difficult it is to keep bringing people back, uh, when it isn't totally necessary. So, with that in mind, uh, we'll begin with item number four, the Habit, item number three, thank you. The approval of the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Yes.
No discussion.
No discussion.
Scuffing the gun, trying to move.
You're ahead of me!
He's trying to move it along.
Yeah, he's trying to move it along, thank you. Uh, all in favor?
Abstain.
Okay, two abstentions. Now we'll get to item number four. Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland requests reapproval of subdivision, the thirteen lot residential subdivision off Broadter Road called Foster Farm Subdivision Two, which is assessed as ma- uh, R forty-seven lot five A. Jay, you want to sort of...
Sure, give me a quick overview. Uh, as it was just, as it's indicated in the title, this is a reapproval. This application was approved in January of this year. Um, the town has a requirement that plans be recorded ninety days from date of approval. However, uh, the applicant Habitat for Humanity was unable to meet that, um, requirement due to, um, some, uh, further difficulties with the closing. There is now a closing schedule, as folks remember, this is actually part of town owned land, that there'll be, um, uh, cooperation between town and Habitat for Humanity. So there's a closing schedule for the end of the month, and, um, I'm assured that, uh, with the reapproval, they'll be able to record within the next ninety days. Nothing has changed from the plan since the board saw it in January, um, and so staff is comfortable with it at this point, um, and has provided a draft motion, uh, for the board to consider if there aren't any other issues. Please go.
Is the applicant here? Please give your name.
Yeah, Mark Primo, I'm a development associate with Habitat. And if I may, just give you a, a quick update, um, as Jay was saying, the, uh, the, um, we had lawyers trying to close this thing within the ninety days, um, but with the affordability covenants, um, the, uh, mortgage positioning, uh, and the biggest issue was the letter of credit requirements of the town. Um, we have two different lenders on this project. One is Gorm Savings Bank and the other's the Genesis Fund, uh, which has a housing-related mission, um, and Genesis Fund doesn't do letter, they don't issue letters of credit. So Gorm Savings ended up having to cover the whole letter of credit, even though they're not lending on the whole amount. Um, and they were, they were able to do that, but they needed to order an appraisal, which came back, and we've, like Jay said, we've got the closing date scheduled for May twenty-seventh, uh, and we've got Grandin lined up for June, so we're, we're ready to go. And the timing of this lines up well with, um, the Community Development Block Grant, which is also, uh, being voted on, I think, this week, it may even be tonight, I don't know. Um, and that will allow the sewer extension and the timing of that. So everything, I, I know it's been a long time coming, but we're ready to go and we're looking for the reapproval.
Okay. Um, does anybody on the board have any comments, questions? Um, the only thing I would remind the applicant is that there are some conditions of approval that we had approved previously, um, and, uh... Well, I didn't realize this was the first time on that. That's right, because if I, well, let me go back a step. Uh, since this is the first time, this is open to public discussion. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment on this proposal? Okay. I'll close that. Um, getting back to what I was just saying, uh, you know, the terms and conditions that previously... Okay, let, let me then have a draft motion. Uh, in light of the board's private finding that the applicant had satisfied all the ordinance requirements and that there are no substantive proposed changes to the prior approval, I move to reapprove the application of Habitat for Humanity of Greater Portland for the Foster Farm Two subdivision. All applicable findings, waivers, and conditions of approval from the board's January twenty-sixth, two thousand and fifteen approval remain in effect. Any discussion? All in favor?
Great, thank you.
The next agenda item has been tabled, which leads us to general item, item number six. Dar and Hamel, Three Bay Street, request an advisory opinion for an appeal for restrictions on non-conforming uses.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the board. My name is Jim Fisher with Northeast Civil Solutions, and we're here this evening to represent Mr. and Mrs. Hamel regarding their project at Three Bay Street, which is down in the East Grand Pine Point area. Essentially, like the previous project, this, the town has already heard this one as well, although it was not with the planning board, it was with the zoning board. Uh, we did actually receive zoning board approvals, um, almost a year ago, and then got an extension this past autumn. Uh, essentially, what happened is, uh, there are two completely different, uh, independent living units that are on the property. One's a smaller cottage, one's the main house. The Hamels live in the main house as their principal residence. They were looking, because of the age of the structure, which is quite aged and deteriorating, as many projects in that area tend to do structurally, uh, we went to, they were intending to raise and rebuild, and still are, the main house. We went to the Zoning Board of Appeals for that a year ago. Uh, we received a unanimous approval to be able to do that. They were, had the intention of, uh, doing the, uh, the main house, raising it, as in tearing it down and then rebuilding it, uh, this past autumn. Uh, they didn't get to that as quickly as they thought, because basically the moratorium, or the unofficial moratorium for doing any construction, uh, Scarborough knows, uh, in the beach areas of town, uh, before anything gets built, you'd like to get through the summer tourist season, so they were preparing to do this last autumn. Uh, they ran out of time in terms of that relatively narrow window to start, so we went back to the Zoning Board of Appeals for an extension and we got it. Uh, then, over the winter time, as they actually started to do the, or began the construction, they were advised, uh, that the cottage that was to be left untouched at this stage, they were, uh, reserved the right to come back to the zoning board at some point in the future. Uh, they were going to focus primarily on, or solely, on the existing house. Their contractor stated, and you can see from your files, that the spatial location of the cottage to the house is relatively close, and their contractor advised them when he did hear that eventually they would like to work on the cottage as well, that it would be a lot easier to tear down and redo both buildings at the same time. So, uh, they toned, so they decided, or then over the winter time, that that would be prudent advice to follow, and, uh, subsequently, they decided to scale back, and this has nothing to do with the planning board, but they've scaled back, uh, their intended renovation of the existing house from, or the main house, from three stories down to two stories, but in conjunction with that, they wanted then to be able to work on the cottage, the smaller cottage, at the same time. So far, so good. Uh, so we are into the Zoning Board of Appeals, uh, because of the small area of the lot, it doesn't meet current zoning. When you tear a building down, you typically have to meet current zoning to the greatest extent feasible, uh, and, which is one of the reasons we're here this evening. But, uh, they decided then, over the winter, that, uh, it would be better to be able to do both cottages at the same time, and because we are, both buildings, but because we are proposing to, uh, raise both structures, it is prudent, and on our advice, that they make them, uh, as least non-conforming as possible, or more conforming to the extent that is feasible. Toward that end, we suggested that, uh, they move the cottage from its existing, uh, location that you can see on your plans, it's tucked in that back corner, uh, as far into the lot as possible, which doesn't move it a whole lot, but does move it, uh, in the right direction two ways, away from both the sideline and the back line. In order to do that, because we're proposing to raise the building and then rebuild it, or reconstruct it, uh, we need to have an advisory opinion from the planning board. What that basically means is that we are looking for your opinion to the Zoning Board of Appeals, that this building is actually being moved to make it less non-conforming on the actual site. There's more to it than that, but in a nutshell, I'm happy to answer any questions or address any comments that you may have.
Since this is also the first time we're hearing this, this is open for public discussion also. Is there anybody from the public that would like to make a comment? Close that and open it to the board. Mike, you want to start?
Sure, thank you. Hi, Jim. Um, on, on your illustration that you have up, that shows what the project may look after it's gained all its approvals, is that correct?
No.
Nope, not yet.
What I'm trying to do is, uh, just, just get an understanding of, I'm, I'm just trying to get an understanding of where the cottage is now and where it's moving to.
Sure. Um, cottage right now, the cottage right now is, as you see it in this corner of the lot, is actually going to be moved about two feet this direction and about, uh, a similar amount this direction. Uh, that's as far as it can actually be moved on the lot, because there, through the State Fire Marshal's Code, there is a, uh, a criteria that separate the buildings, have to be separated by a minimum distance from fire code standpoint. Uh, but we still had a little bit of play here, and, uh, toward that end, what you see is the existing condition, is essentially what you're going to see as the final condition, it's just that this cottage is going to be moved slightly into the lot.
Okay, so what we see is current condition?
What you see is current condition. You actually have in your packet, uh, a rendition by the architect, uh, this colored one.
Yeah.
Uh, this sketch only, to be sure, but the, the building information, uh, is exactly the same, it's just going to be moved a bit, and that sketch shows you how much it's going to be moved into the lot from where it is right now.
So essentially what we're doing is, we're redoing what was a, what you, um, were able to achieve last year? You get, you're, you're looking for advisory opinion from us to the ZBA, and then you're going to go to the ZBA to get...
Yes, we're actually scheduled to go to the ZBA, um, pursuant to the, uh, the approvals this evening, if it comes to that, um, and two days, on, on Wednesday. Uh, what we went to the Zoning Board of Appeals for last year and got unanimous approvals for the first time around, and then for the, uh, the reapproval in, uh, in the autumn, was for the main building, and the footprint of the main building is essentially as you see it right now, and it's going to stay that way. Uh, that was going to be, it goes from a two-story structure to a three-story structure. Well, now the main building is staying as a two-story structure, and while we did not touch or did not focus on last time, last year, with the zoning board, the cottage, because the, the Hamels just weren't ready to go there at that point, they had now decided with advice from their consultants and, uh, from their contractors, that it would be better, since they're doing both of them anyway, or they wanted to, to do both of them now. The issue then is, because we're actually proposing not just to, uh, expand, but to move the, uh, the smaller cottage, as soon as we move anything, it's basically considered not there.
Right.
Uh, notwithstanding the fact that it's been there for about eighty years. So from a non-conforming use standpoint, uh, because it, non-conforming meaning there's two houses, two completely, uh, individual habitable structures on one lot, we needed to come to the planning board so that you guys can take a look at this and say, you know, does it meet the criteria as far as, uh, moving it anywhere else on the lot that could be done? And our advice to the zoning board would be, if they pushed it as far as they can, then essentially that's then up to the zoning board to be able to approve, um, that variance.
And, and what is, is the cottage used in any way, shape, or form currently?
Oh, yes, it's been used as a habitable structure, as far as we know, since it was built. Um, it looks like a garage, like it might have been a garage, it was not, or there are no records anywhere that indicate that it was anything other than a secondary home. Basically, it's an additional dwelling unit, essentially, but it's been that way for, since, before there was zoning. Um, and they have used it, uh, for that very purpose. They've usually occupied one house initially, rented out the other one. Uh, the main house is their principal residence, is their only residence right now, so what they're proposing to do is, uh, during the course of the rebuild of both, uh, they will rent off-site somewhere for hopefully a relatively short period of, of time over the off-season, and then they'd like to be able to, uh, move in about this time next year, feasible, which it is feasible to do so.
Okay, thanks. So, uh, Mr. Chairman, what I'm focusing on, of course, is what Jim stated, is that this is, uh, at the end of the day, this will be made still non-conforming, but more, or I should say, less non-conforming than its current situation, and, uh, I would be in favor of moving a favorable opinion to the ZBA.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John?
No issues with this at all. I assume the footprint is basically the same, just slightly slight increase by looks at it? Uh, yes, but actually, overall, um, the overall footprint of both cottages, or both structures, is actually going to be reduced on the lot. So it's similar to the current use, I have no issues with it at all.
Susan?
I don't have any problems with it, thank you.
Roger.
I, I have no problems with this either, but I do have a question, maybe direct it to Jay.
Sure.
Um, I know we have a number of, um, properties in town, Higgins Beach, uh, and mostly Higgins Beach, I think, where they have a similar situation as this, where they have a main cottage and they have a secondary cottage. Is, have we run into anything like this in the past, and is this pretty normal?
Um...
What I mean is, moving one of the cottages around or something like that?
Uh, certainly, I think, you know, the Zoning Board of Appeals typically sees a lot of these, um, so, uh, in terms of coming before the planning board, maybe, maybe one a year or so, um, but certainly the Zoning Board of Appeals sees quite a number of reconstructed non-conforming structures, um, for whatever reason, don't necessarily tip the miscellaneous appeal requirement for the advisory opinion, but it's not all that uncommon, and is part of the reason why the town Long Range Planning Committee is taking a look at the zoning down the Higgins Beach area in the month of June.
So, so if, if they were to build on the existing, the second cottage, on the existing foundation, whatever's there, that would be basically grandfathered, is that right?
I'm, I'm sorry.
If they were to just reconstruct the second cottage on the existing foundation?
If they were to, basically what the ordinance says is, once you tear down a structure, it needs to go through a miscellaneous appeal process. So even if they were to rebuild on that same location, it would still require miscellaneous appeal, um, the ordinance, under non-conformity, talks about, you know, if you demolish a building, then it needs to be reviewed.
Okay, thanks. Nick?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, I've just got a couple of things. Uh, Roger, just to follow up, uh, so to understand, we were talking about this before the formal meeting, uh, because there are so many non-conforming structures down there, the Long Range Planning Committee is trying to get the whole area rezoned so that we don't have to go through this every time one of these situations come up, so they are addressing the issue. Um, I just got a couple of things. Uh, one, and first of all, a, a comment, this is not in the shoreline zone, so that's why we don't get into that. Uh, two, what about parking? Uh, what, what's the parking situation there?
There is a, parking is right here, as you, I, I just mean, right here, uh, which is right in front of, uh, the existing cottage and will remain that way.
Okay. My second is, the abuddies, are they aware of the intent here?
Yes, that was actually sent, uh, the, uh, the postcards were sent out, the letters from the town, uh, have now been sent out three times. One was for the, uh, the original approvals that we got last year, the extension this, about this time, the extension in October, and then again for the Zoning Board of Appeals that we're meeting on, uh, in two days. Um, the first two meetings, they were public hearings, as they typically are, and there was no issues.
Okay, because, when are they going to start doing this, by the way? What's their intent?
Constructing the project, yeah? They would be after the summer season.
After the summer season?
Yes.
Okay, so that won't disrupt the, the whole summer flow of things?
No, there's a very strong rule of thumb that says, in the tourist areas, please do not, and not shy of emergency situations, no major external construction between Memorial Day and Labor Day.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to double check on that. Um, I don't have any further questions, so, um, we just have to give an advisory opinion, and then it seems that it's unanimous that we will give a, a positive advisory opinion to the ZBA on your behalf.
That's great. Thank you for your time.
Now we have a little different situation. Item number seven, Ann Stewart, twenty-two Massacre, uh, Massacre Lane, requests review for the replacement of a foundation under a non-conforming structure in the shoreline zone.
Hello, my name is Trevor Watson, I'm, uh, working on behalf of, uh, the Stewarts, and I work for Ida Investments, uh, down on Black Point Road. Okay, so the, um, the Stewarts are hoping to, uh, gain your approval that the current, that as the structure currently exists, it is the, uh, best location for it to exist, so that, uh, we can elevate the structure to the anticipated FEMA flood maps. So, the, there's, as Jay noted, there's a couple of, uh, restrictions, uh, on this lot. The first is that it's a non-con, it's a non-conforming lot, because it does not meet the, uh, minimum lot size. It also has no legal building envelope, as the front and rear yards, uh, setbacks overlap each other. Uh, it's, it's basically a flat lot, um, and it's, uh, impacted by the shoreline zone, uh, per, uh, sort of, the, the shoreline zone to wetlands. So no other, uh, uh, restrictions impact this lot, other than the shoreline zone. So, um, we're not looking to increase the footprint at all, we're just looking to merely elevate the structure. Uh, it's existed in this location at this elevation, uh, since it was built sixty-plus years ago, um, and we have, uh, support from all the neighbors, I, I think I included all the letters.
Yes.
Uh, yeah, which is first for us. So, um, basically, any, any, uh, proposal to, we feel that any proposal to relocate the structure to benefit the shoreline zone on the, on the one side would be negatively impactful to at least, uh, property owners on two other sides. So I think that's it. I'm not as well versed in the planning board as I am the zoning board, but... Oh, one last comment, sorry, looking at my notes. It's not possible to completely relocate the structure anywhere on the lot and fully remove it from the shoreline zone.
Okay. Once again, this is the first time it's coming before us, and this is also open to public discussion. Does anybody have any comments? If not, it was public discussion and opening up to the board. Uh, to me, this one is pretty straight forward. Is anybody on the board, Sue, go ahead.
Um, I don't really have any problems with this at all, I'm just taking the chance to say historically, I think this is an important point, a quick turning point, because we're going to be seeing a lot of these, and this is like the first one, so...
Do I get a pass, huh?
Hmm?
Do I get a pass, too?
No, but I think we're going to give our okay to it, because the decision has got to be done, and, uh, people who are doing it sooner than later need to be commended, so...
Thank you.
Anything else?
Uh, I guess just, so all, what we're really talking about is, we're taking a current structure and we're raising it.
That's it.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, I can, you can, I, I included some photographs, uh, without, you know, trying to be brief here, uh, you can see on the second page of the, sort of the packet, uh, in the upper, the property images, in the upper left-hand corner, that's, that's the one, I mean, the house, uh, sits pretty low to the ground, and I tried to include it, it came, apparently it came out pretty dark in the printing, uh, but in the lower right-hand corner of that upper-left image, the, uh, Massacre Lane sits about two feet above, so that the lot itself is actually depressed. Um, you can see in the photo to the right of that, uh, the Stewart residence is the, is the house on the left, um, you can see that the, that the house on the right, uh, is higher, is a higher structure, as also indicated in the, in the, in the image to the lower right, and then the lower left is just the, the seasonal flooding that, that happens, um, you know, it's, it's increa, you know, it's increasing every year.
Um, so there's no, there's no effort or, uh, interest in diverting the water in any way, shape, or form? You're just still going to let that take its natural course?
I mean, I, I think, short of, I don't think that would be possible to divert the water, um, um, I mean, you're limited, I'm, I'm not, uh, an expert on it, but you're limited in how much fill you could move in, and, and I think that any, any method of diversion would be potentially negatively impactful to the neighbors, uh, you know, and then you'd have to divert it, you'd have to divert it straight to the ocean, so you'd have to cross Massacre Lane and then, um, Meredith Webster's lot, and then you'd have a, some kind of drain pipe on the beach. I don't know how they...
So, so, no basement is going to be, it's just going to be built on peers?
Nope, we're going to be elevated up on concrete piers. Um, currently, the structure exists on wood posts, and, uh, the, uh, you know, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a maintenance issue, you know, every couple of years, the, uh, I get into it in the, in the zoning board, but every couple of years, the, the, you know, the wood rots away, even pressure treated is not meant to be, uh, inundated or submerged with water. Uh, I include some documentation that I can get you from the, you know, the Pressure Treated Wood Manufacturers Association of America, uh, that it, you know, it's just a, it's a maintenance issue, and it, it's, it's begin, it begins to impact the value of the property, you know, who's going to buy a property that, that needs, uh, you know, almost constant maintenance to shoring up the foundation.
Mm-hmm, okay. And you've already done the engineering, uh, as far as finding the stable, um, was it bedrock, is it going to sit on bedrock, or?
Nope, it'll sit on, uh, concrete piers, so the last page of the, um...
No, the concrete piers, they'll sit on what?
The, the concrete piers will sit on a continuous footing, so it basically will look like a, um, checkerboard, almost, you know, of the, of the footing being continuously, uh, poured, one solid footing, not, not, you know, slab, but the, the piers, the footings for the piers will be interconnected, and so the goal is that you go down far enough and the whole building is stabilized, so that it doesn't, it, it offsets the weight, the, the pressure of the earth and the, the, the amount of footprint, uh, offsets the weight of the building, so that it doesn't, um, you know, sink.
But it, it floats?
Uh, I mean, I guess you could say that, you know, as odd as that sounds.
Right, okay.
The building would float on the footing.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else?
No.
I, just a question on the piers again, uh, do we, maybe it's in here somewhere, but do we have any kind of guidelines as to, um, how many piers, I mean, like, I agree with Sue, we're going to see more of these, and do we have any kind of guidelines that you're supposed to have so many piers for a square foot of structure being raised, and how deep these piers are supposed to go down, or anything like that, or is this all brand-new?
Well, they have to go down to four feet, or ledge, four feet is the building code requirement.
Okay.
And in, in terms of the, um, the, the number, uh, basically, we just sort of replace, uh...
The wooden ones?
Yeah, because that's designating point loads, or, you know, I mean, if it, if it didn't, if, if it needed more, you would think that a problem would have come up in the last sixty years.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll tell you one thing that impressed me, we've had, in my tenure here, uh, many projects, and we've had pros and cons from the abuddies. This is the first time, I think, I've had eight approvals for, by the abuddies, uh, and all the time that I've sat here, I was impressed.
I didn't know if I should include all of them.
Oh, absolutely, I'll tell you, that catches my eye, uh, if nobody else's, and that was very impressive. Um, okay, I have a draft motion. Based on the materials presented in the applications submitted by Ida Investments, I move to approve the application of Mr. and Mrs. Stewart for the placement of a foundation under the existing... for the placement of a foundation under the existing non-conforming structure, uh, twenty-two Ma- Massacre Lane in the Shoreline Overlay District. Do I hear a second? Any discussion? All in favor? So, poof.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay, now, we're gonna walk in a little different direction. Item number eight. Dunston Properties LLC requests sketch plan review for mixed-use development at the intersection of Route One and Stewart Drive.
I don't know that the applicant is here, Mr. Chair. He's not here. The board is so inclined, you could move this item to last on the agenda and see if the applicant's ears or you could go forward with the discussion. So, it would be pretty difficult at sketch plan level.
No, I'll, I'll move it down and if they're not here, we'll just put it off.
I'll approve that.
Okay. Item number nine, Burnham Village LLC requests a site plan and subdivision review for the Burnham Village apartment complex. After him, Sue. After you.
Are you prepared for the presentation?
Need to do an overview.
I want you to do an overview.
All right. So, this item is a, before the board for the development of, of Burnham Village Apartments. This is in the TBC zoning district. Uh, as board members will recall, this item, you see, sort of, on numerous occasions, going back to November of twenty-fourteen, when you, uh, began the review with a, as part of the plan development review process, um, sort of a three-step process with site inventory and master plan. It was in, uh, November, you gave, uh, provided a master plan approval, which sort of set the pattern of development more or less moving forward. Um, as part of that discussion, the board was primarily interested in access to the site, uh, buffering to the neighbors. Um, uh, those were two of the big ones, obviously, stormwater, architecture, lighting, and the rest have been, uh, of concern as well. But those were the sort of major areas of interest. Um, through the last few months, the applicant's been before the board for further review, um, to revise their site plans. Um, I think at our last meeting, there was still some discussion about the driveway access. I know our, our, our traffic engineer has some concerns with the intersection, um, but that, I believe, has been revised. I'm sure the applicant will bring us up to speed on that. I will note that in staff comments, we reckon, we stated that the DEP permit had not yet been in hand. So, I think I, maybe the next day after sending these comments out, the DEP permit was submitted. So, we do have that, um, that has been finalized. Uh, outside that, you have a few additional, uh, comments from staff and, uh, with that, Mr. Chair, I turn it back to you.
And I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Sean Frank. I'm an engineer with Sebaggo Technics. Um, a- as Jay has stated, we've been, uh, in front of this board numerous times, uh, starting with that master plan and working our way down. Uh, we were here last, I think it was March thirtieth, um, and, uh, we weren't here last night because we were still waiting for our DEP permit. But we, uh, did meet with, uh, staff. Uh, we have actually adjusted the driveway just a little bit at the intersection with, uh, Dyna Drive in accordance with the traffic engineer's recommendation. Um, we did look at the existing roadway, Dyna Drive, that is, uh, intersecting with our driveway and then leading into Broad Turn Road. Uh, it's twenty feet of pavement with a two-foot gravel shoulder. Uh, but in terms of the buildup, there's, uh, twelve inches of gravel and three inches of pavement, which is where the, basically, with about three inches off from, uh, where the, a town road would be. Uh, and it's certainly been a, a standard section that I've seen in a lot of, uh, parking lots and driveways and those types of things. So, uh, uh, we're comfortable that the existing Dyna Drive is certainly acceptable for the proposed use we're looking at, which is, you know, thirty-two one-bedroom apartments that'll be accessing through the driveway. Um, uh, Jay also mentioned about a propane, the proposed propane tank on the north side of one of the buildings and, uh, couldn't we screen that with some, uh, stockade fencing? We'd be happy to do that, uh, if the board would be comfortable with that as a condition. Uh, there was another discussion regarding public safety and we did talk to, uh, uh, Captain St. Pierre and in terms of the, the addresses of the buildings and how they're gonna be designated, uh, we believe are all set with public safety and the fire department and in terms of access, uh, sprinkler systems, the alarms and the whole nine yards. So, we do think, uh, everything's worked out from the, uh, the public safety standpoint. Uh, we did have the, uh, memorandum from, uh, Woodard and Curran as well, uh, which, again, obviously, they didn't, uh, dig any test pits out there regarding the existing driveway, nor did I, uh, but they did state that, uh, eighteen inches of total pavement structure is commonly used def- passenger vehicle driveways and roadways found on, uh, suitable subsoils. So, uh, again, Mr. Chairman, I know you folks have seen this a lot. As you stated, I know you have a busy agenda tonight, so I would conclude my presentation, but certainly be, uh, happy to answer any questions that the board may have regarding this approval. Thank you.
Before, um, I open this up to the board, we have had requests from a couple of people of the, uh, from the public to, uh, make comments and I'm going to allow that. So, if anybody is here from the public that wishes to talk about this particular project, please come forward. Give your name and address, please.
Erica Snow in ten Dunston Avenue. Um, be, I am here on behalf of my father, Tom Sn- Tom Snow, who, um, actually owns the property. Um, one of his main concerns is if any of this traffic will end up coming out, um, through North Street and onto Dunston Avenue, um, or via Adora Circle and then down onto Dunston Avenue. Um, 'cause right now, obviously, we have a issue as it is with traffic. Um, my concern would be as far as it all coming out onto Broad Turn Road would be people trying to make that right turn, or I should say, left turn across traffic and potentially backing traffic up to, um, Route One, especially in the summertime. And now with Habitat for Humanity also putting buildings up further down the road on Broad Turn Road, that the amount of traffic that's going to be, um, coming down through there, I think that, um, I'm not quite sure what was determined as far as the traffic study and what's going to be done about that, but we all know that Dunston is, um, a traffic nightmare, shall we say? So, um, I hope that that is taken into consideration with any of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Emily Hall. I live at four North Street. Uh, my concern is actually for, I have a, a similar concern as my neighbors. Hi, nice to meet you. Um, with traffic, I, the last plan I saw, actually, though, hopefully that's not an issue and I'm, I'm hoping the plan hasn't changed. Um, my concern is for the maintenance of the complex. So, right now, with three apartment buildings, I don't think it's well-maintained as it should be. Um, it's common to see, uh, trash outside of the cans, uh, the mailboxes pile over and then I get trash blowing into my yard and constantly picking up trash. Um, so that's my biggest concern and, uh, doubling the number of buildings or tripling when you include garages and all the other things. Um, I would like, I'm interested to hear the plan for better maintaining. Um, I don't know, the last I saw, there wasn't a sufficient buffer or fence or anything on, on the North Street construction. I think that's important to kind of maintain the North Street Dunston Avenue neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? If it's not, I'll close the public comment and open it up to the board. John, you wanna start?
Okay. Mike, sure. Um, Sean, is, this, this phase does not exit out to, uh, North or Aurora, does it?
That's correct. And remember, they're not interconnected either, so, uh, you know, there will be no opportunity, uh, for the traffic from this phase to actually go through the, the existing phase and to access either, uh, North Street or Aurora Circle. Um, uh, and remember, that was a big part of the conversation we worked through in terms of the whole master plan associated with this. So, there's no interconnectivity between the two phases. We'll have an access off from Dyna Drive, which is off from Broad Turn Road. Uh, we did have a full traffic study at the intersection of Broad Turn Road and Dyna Drive, uh, which was reviewed by the, uh, the Towns Traffic Engineer. Actually, it's a high level of service at that, at that intersection. Uh, we do know the situation in Dunston, um, which, again, is obviously a much bigger issue than, than what can be dealt with here on this site. Um, however, there is a, as you all know, there's a, a, the, the town has an intersection fee, uh, and, you know, we're pa- actually paying our fair share associated with that. I think it's in terms of just to the Dunston, I think that's right around thirty thousand dollars in terms of what our, our, uh, uh, contribution will be to, uh, uh, to assist in the, uh, the improvements at Dunston. But actually, at the driveway entrance of Broad Turn and Dyna Drive, uh, you know, it's, it's in fine shape and, uh, there's good site distance and, uh, good level of service.
Um, I appreciate you, uh, providing us with a, uh, report on the condition of Dyna Drive. Um, that is a private road.
Yes.
And can you just real- really quick, just illustrate who, who is in charge of the maintenance of it? Is it shared by, uh, this development as well as the diner?
It is, it will be as of this construction. Of course, right now, the only thing it services is the diner, period. So, right now, the diner is, uh, the lone, uh, uh, person responsible for the maintenance associated with that driveway and their parking area. Uh, but when, uh, uh, the applicant obtained, uh, an easement, uh, to utilize that, they in fact didn't enter into a, a maintenance agreement as well associated with that. Number one, obviously, anything we do in association with our construction has to be brought back to its, its pre-existing condition and then there is a sharing formula worked out for, for plowing and maintenance and those types of things down the road.
I just have to provide this little bit of feedback. It's not enough for me to not, um, to, to oppose the project, but I, 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 I think it's important that I do, I would say that if we were beginning by illustrating this new development with a road off Broad Turn, with an access drive off Broad Turn, I think I would have asked for something a little bit more substantial as far as width, et cetera. I drove on that road, uh, a couple of weeks ago and, um, as you, as you stated, it's about twenty feet wide, I think you said the pavement was. And we've, we've approved twenty-foot-wide roads before, at least twenty-two maybe, or less than the standard of twenty-four. But I just wonder what, I mean, what, maybe you can tell me, what was the trip, uh, I don't have it in front of me, what, uh, the traffic analysis as far as, what thirty-two one-bedroom homes is gonna generate?
Uh, we looked more, obviously, at the peaks, but they were looking at, uh, twenty-two AM peak hour trips and twenty-five PM peak hour trips. So, you know, roughly one every two minutes.
Right. So, I don't know, I'd, I'm just cautiously optimistic that that's gonna work out and, um, I don't know what recourse, if you will, the town might have if in the, if, if in a future day we find that it just doesn't serve the demand.
Well, again, I, I, I would certainly think from the applicant's standpoint and certainly from the diners as well, that obviously, if there's any issues associated with that, uh, through the chair, that, you know, I'm sure that they would want to rectify that as well. Uh, uh, again, I appreciate your concerns, but I, I don't know if I, I totally share them, to be honest with you. I just don't see, I think that we'll be seeing the level, uh, of activity on that driveway that's, that would really cause me any great concerns. It really doesn't.
Are we here tonight for, uh, final approval?
Yes.
Um, I, I did notice that the condition of the road in some areas was, you know, and Dyna Drive was, you know, a little, um, disrepair.
Where that utility core could have occurred, yes.
Exactly. Um, is that gonna be brought up to a better standard?
And like I say, our utilities are going in right in that same area, so I would say at the end of the day, hopefully, that, you know, right where we're tying in with our driveways coming in, that that area right in there should all be pretty much about to, you know, a finished pavements, this, uh, quality.
Okay. And once that's all completed, that will, um, I, that will be analyzed by town engineers, so maybe a question for Jay? Um, I mean, there'll be a standard evaluation?
We can make that part of the conditions, Mike.
As far as the, you know, the condition of the road is satisfactory, has been repaired satisfactory to...
Yeah, we can make that part of the conditions.
Is that, is, is that normal anyway?
At this point, um, the status of the road, you know, we don't have any, you know, other than the detailed disc- discussion of what the road is built to, it's not part of their plan set.
Right.
So, I would say, right now, the way things stand is certainly any cuts they do in the road, they'll have to repair to sort of the standard...
Sure.
You know, standard fare. But in terms of any additional improvements at the board, if that's where you're seeking, uh, at this point, there's, there's, that wouldn't be part of the...
No, I'm satisfied that the report, uh, tells me that the, uh, the foundation, if you will, of the road, the basic construction of the road is, um, is at town standard today. But there is some disrepair of the pavement area.
Yes, again, right where that utility spot was.
And, and i- i- if, if necessary, I would like to see as a part of a, approval, conditions that, um, an inspection be made whereby that road has been fixed to the satisfaction of, you know, the town. I mean, I know that sounds vague, but I don't know how else to be more specific.
No, and that's fine, again, 'cause I'll certainly, I'll be out when they, 'cause we're gonna go into the road for utility connections. When they go in there, I'm certainly gonna take a look at it as well, so, you know, uh, I'd be more than happy to work with the town on, you know, that we reviewed the, the, the road during construction, uh, you know, everything seemed satisfactory with the existing road base. Uh, and now, out post-construction, uh, you know, the road has been brought to an acceptable level, something to that effect.
Thank you, Sean. And, and to the, uh, to the question of traffic, yes, Dun- Dunston has been, um, has been on, uh, the forefront of our discussions whenever developing it and, and there's been a lot of development in recent decade around Scarborough. We've just quit...
And changes have occurred there. I know, you know, I'm s- I know we still have issues there, but certainly changes have occurred.
And, um, but this, there's nothing that tells me that this, that, that the use of this land is outside the provisions of what we have in place as far as the ordinance goes. I mean, we can tweak it here and there and Sean's, Sean's, um, um, worked hard to do that as our town staff has, but, um, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a good use of the land. We need more, uh, more opportunities for folks to live in, uh, projects such as this and, um, and we just do the best we can with, uh, with the ordinance we have in, in place. And, and the impact fee does in fact help improve that, uh, help improve that intersection as, as we've seen over the past several years, so... Um, the traffic experts say it's gonna work.
And I will just remind the board, as a part of our master plan, when we spent quite a bit of time on that, remember, I originally had an access out to Martin Drive. Certainly, no one wanted us to go out to North Street or Aurora Circle. I think we all understood that early in the process. Uh, my only available apps, access originally was Martin Drive, uh, so folks didn't want to see that. So, you know, when it really came down to it was, you know, the, the Dyna Drive was the, the preferred option, if you will, from staff and the board, uh, early in the master planning process. So, you know, we did do our best and, and the applicant did his best in terms of obtaining that access easement, so in fact, we could utilize that, that existing driveway.
Thank you. Susan?
Great landscaping. Thank you very much. I got a copy from staff that it was my size, so I could actually read it and know what you're using in great landscaping. Um, I also drove down in there. I drove down in there twice. I drove down in once just so I could figure out what the road did and noticed what it was you were talking about. I just assumed that that would be cleaned up because it's gonna be used, whereas right now, it's not being used. But I think putting it at the condition probably is not a bad idea. Um, the second time I went, there were two different groups of people out. I do this a lot. I stopped and I talked to them and I said, "What do you think? Does this guy take good care of his places?" "Oh, yeah, it's got new problems." "No, noisy?" "Oh, no, everything's great." And then I stopped with the other and asked the same questions. I got exactly the same feedback. There was nothing on the ground. There was absolutely no indication whatsoever that it wasn't being well cared for, so maybe, and they didn't know I was coming. So, I think that basically, with that kind of an experience, I feel pretty good about what is, is being offered. And I think it's wonderful that it's, that we're doing this in Scarborough. I call it workforce housing. I'm not sure that that's exactly what workforce housing is, but we don't have any of it in Scarborough. So, um, I really approve highly of the concept here. And one, one more thing, one more thing I gotta say, um, concept, oh, and it goes beautifully with Habitat for Humanity. So, the fact that they're in the same general neighborhood, it's great. So, I wish them good luck and, um, I'm sure we'll watch it carefully if there are any problems with the road or if there is any problems with the maintenance, we'll be caring about it.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Roger. You could just refresh my memory, I believe it's in the upper left of that parking area. There's supposed to be the, is that where the trash containers were? And if you jog my memory, there was a different, you were using a different methodology for the trash bins than what was used on the first phase, is that correct?
Right, exactly. The dumpster in the existing first phase.
And can you just, yeah?
And we don't want to use the dumpster in the second phase, and hopefully we'll retire it at some point in the first phase as well. Because remember, we actually purchased, two existing buildings were there that were constructed in the eighties, so, you know, we bought in existing condition. But these are basically going to be larger bins, almost like the residential bins that you're going to have, but for a community purpose, like you have the recycling and the general trash. They're going to be kind of hidden a little bit behind some landscaped area, but, you know, where you can actually walk from the apartments, come in from the back to access the bins to put your trash and recycling in, and they'll have a private contract that'll come into the parking lot, and again, we'll actually have to roll those out, if you will, on a bin-by-bin basis, but it'll be a commercial pickup, but we'd be utilizing, you know, basically, commercial-sized bins with the same type of bins that you folks utilize right here in the town.
Thank you for the refresh, I thought that was part of it. I'm all set.
I just got a couple of things.
Excuse me for interrupting, but before you go, I forgot, I have on the staff comments that mentions the concept, the issue with the previous buildings and the whole issue of twelve units per building. I wasn't able to be at the long-range planning committee meeting, so I'm just making sure that this issue is indeed being moved along.
Yeah, that actually came up, will come up as part of the Dunston proposal, because this applicant isn't proposing any more than twelve units.
No problem, thank you.
Right on point.
Thank you, Jay. I did not have that answer.
Right on point, Sue. I've got a couple of things. If I understand, the traffic won't be going on to North Street?
That's absolutely correct.
When the construction is done, what road are they going to use?
Dyna Drive, and Dyna Drive only going to Broad Turn Road.
Okay, well, I'm sure, I'm going to ask for the condition that that road be repaired before we, you know, give, you know, as part of the conditions. The other issue, the speaker is saying that trash, this new proposal isn't any contiguous to her.
It's not. Harold, do you want to discuss the maintenance at all?
Yep, if you want to. This is Harold Burnham, of Burnham Village LLC. Yep, how you doing?
Okay, the individual on North Street.
Your issue there is the pole and press has crammed as many paper flyer things that they, and attached to my mailbox kind of without asking me, and that mailman should stop after you can't put anything more in it, should stop there, but it doesn't. And you're concerned, I will definitely address. And as far as, what were some of the other concerns? Trash from the dumpster, we have, we have a lot of people from the neighborhood that use the dumpster, that I pay for private trash disposal, so we try to lock the top of it and get, issue keys to the tenants, and what happens is that people get, that are used to using that, get frustrated and just dispose on top of it or around it. So, why we went with the tote system, maybe it'll cut down a little bit, kind of hide it, kind of be able to put it out in front of people, so, you know, tenants can say to me, "Hey, you know, I saw this truck at this license plate, come here, put two, three cubic yards of material around your dumpster or your dumping area," and, uh...
Okay. Sean, I just got a couple of things, just to go over a couple of things.
That's all.
Screening of the propane tank, is that?
That's fine, that's a condition, we'd be happy with that.
And I know you talk to public safety, but I look for written, to say definitively.
And, uh...
Okay. All right, with that in mind. You've got the third. Oh, yeah, because I'm not going to read you right there. With that in mind, I move to approve the site plan and subdivision application of Burnham Village LLC titled Burn Village Apartments as dated four twenty-seven fifteen for develop of three structures consisting of a total of thirty-two one-bedroom units and the associated infrastructure with the following conditions. Condition one, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall submit revised plans addressing the following. Additional screening to the northerly propane tank, provide a written description regarding addressing for review and approval by public safety. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall pay impact fees in accordance with the following calculation. Dunston Corner, thirty thousand eight hundred and forty-four dollars. Hager's Parkway, eight thousand nine hundred and ten dollars. Oak Hill, five thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. And number three.
Trying to capture on the discussion the board had, I believe this is what you're looking for, prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the town shall inspect the existing Dyna Drive to ensure it has been satisfaction repaired. If maintenance repairs are found to be needed, they shall be completed by the applicant.
That's satisfactory? Do I have a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you very much.
And thank you to the speakers too, appreciate your comments. They're going to. Mr. Chairman, I moved you down because we went by you, so you're going to be last on the agenda tonight. Next is number ten. One thirty-seven U.S. Route One Scarborough Realty LLC requests final site plan amendment review for property located at one thirty-seven U.S. Route One, Prime Mercedes-Benz dealership and one fifty-one U.S. Route One, Sunoco Gas Station as part of a contract zone amendment review process. Before you stop, why don't you?
Sure. Yeah, let's see, Mr. Chair, as you just mentioned, the board has seen this item before a couple of times, this has been part of a, the original project is part of a contract zone, which was approved some number of years ago, and the applicant has gone through the process with the town council and amended the contract zone to allow the expansion of the parking field onto the former, or current, I should say, I'm sorry, Sunoco Gas Station. Additionally, the applicant's also before the board with an expansion of the building, which includes service bay and car wash. The board reviewed this item, I think it was maybe two meetings ago. Primary areas of discussion were involved around landscaping, architectural details, and signage. Staff has comments in those regards. There's also just a comment about the applicant, as folks may remember, they have a license agreement of some form with the DOC for trade agent to Route One, and the applicant continues to work with DOC on revising that language. But it's not a BEP stormwater permit per se, this is a different arrangement, but something that's still being worked through. So, with that, you should have staff comments as well as comments from Woodard and Kern, period you items, by and large, I think they've largely been satisfied at this point as well. Would that turn back to you, Mr. Chair?
I'll open it up to the upper.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Paul Strowski, an engineer from Sibago Technics, and with me today are Mr. Dan Dussette of Prime Motors and Dave Richards of Garantergen. As Jay mentioned, this was before the planning board on March thirtieth, basically to seek conceptual preliminary approval, to then go back to the town council with a final reading of the Second Amendment to the contract zone. We met with town council on April fifteenth, at which we received unanimous approval on the Second Amendment to the contract agreement, which was recorded on April thirtieth, and then that information was conveyed to Mr. Dan Bacon, basically to satisfy a condition that the agreement was recorded prior to any final decision being made tonight at the board. It's for approximately twenty-two hundred square foot addition to the current building, as well as additional parking spaces as depicted on the plan, approximately sixty-five spaces. We've added some additional landscaping per the request of the board as part of those comments, staff comments. We've also decreased the total number of parking spaces by two, by increasing the island width to approximately, ranging between nine and eleven feet. There's seven proposed new LED lights, it's the same fixture, just a new LED. Five of those lights around the perimeter are designated NFO, which are neighbor-friendly optics, so those will be an internal shielding system. You know, plantings that were proposed by our landscape architect are kind of in the keeping of what's currently there, adding some additional color. Along that detention berm, we added some additional plantings, mostly some Sergeant Junipers, which are pretty hard, excuse me, pretty hardy, and, you know, have, the experiences that they've done well in kind of the narrow width areas, such as the, in between the planting, the parking islands, as well as the berm. Again, knowing you guys have a full agenda, that will be the conclusion of my meeting, but answer any questions.
Well, this is another item that is for public discussion, so if anybody from the public wishes to make a presentation? There would now. Hearing none? I close the public discussion, and I'm going to start with Susan, because I know you've had some landscaping questions.
Okay. Where's the retention pond?
The detention pond is the existing one that's right along with this area.
Yep.
There's the current footprint right there, it will be enlarged to accommodate the additional impervious area that's going to be added as a result of the parking.
I mean, there are other questions that are open here, but I'm sure the rest of the board will take care of them, because I am going to stick with landscaping. I had asked for at least some sort of overall look at the landscaping along the whole Route One presentation of crime, and it didn't happen. So, I gather the applicant doesn't think it's important. And I'm going to go back to what I said last time, which to me is incredibly important, because this is Route One. This is where everybody coming south on Interstate ninety-five comes into Scarborough, and we're being greeted by Main Medical Center, nice land, I mean, you know, they had to have that parking out front, we couldn't have the whole buildings forward, but the landscaping in that is incredibly adequate. And then we have Prime Motors. Now, I have nothing against Prime Motors, I think it's a very fine site, the building is great, cars are terrific, but the landscaping, really. When I drive down here, because I do, I live on Black Point Road, how many times a day do I go by here? Many. And then I look, with my experience, and then I look at, what was I looking at? Um, it shows me, okay, if you take a look at where the retention pond is, what they have now in those areas, those parking areas that exist just beyond the retention pond are these big white, I don't know what you call them, but they're like, you know, vans, what do you call, you know, somebody, give me, give me help. Okay, fine. Yeah, and they're huge, and they're like a dozen of them, one right after the other. And I look at it, and the landscaping does this to mask any of them. The back end of a big white RV is not what I would consider to be something that's going to haul people in, but I don't know much about the business. But there could be more of an effort made to try to put in some trees that will actually buffer. I understand not wanting to buffer the wonderful half circles that come out close to Black Point Road, I don't have any problems with that. But when you look, if you turn that around again to the other side, this is the problem with landscaping. This is the problem with landscape sketching. Those green circles are supposed to be trees. Now, if you look at those trees, you think that you're going to get a fairly good-sized tree when it's grown, but not so much. These are not on purpose, bushy trees, because we don't want to spoil the appearance of the cars, which again, I understand, and I'm not saying it's wrong, but this is absolutely the minimum that you could get by with and actually meet the requirements of the zoning for that part of Scarborough. I don't understand, I mean, what they've done with the parking lot, the additional parking lot, between islands in the middle, that's really excellent, and I want to give kudos where they belong, I really think that that's very well done. But nothing has been done along Route One, the trees are not adequate, they're not even healthy. Last year, I went in and actually asked if we could get Mercedes-Benz to replace a couple of those trees, so they looked as if they were healthy, and it didn't happen. So, I'm just, and I don't expect any of this to happen either, but it's my opportunity to say, we could be doing better than this, and frankly, I'm disappointed. I think that, again, I think against the applicant in terms of the business that he runs, or the products that he sells, and it definitely is better than what used to be there, if someone said that to me, "Oh, well, it's better than what used to be there," and somehow that's supposed to make me feel better. Wish it doesn't. So, I will have an upset about landscaping, but thank you for the opportunity. By the way, anything that could be done, just as a way of saying, "Well, we've heard you," would be appreciated. Thank you.
I do have a question before I turn it over to other members. I've noticed that you've had some sort of landscaper there the whole week. Were they just?
Oh, that was just landscape maintenance, providing additional landscape mulch and such.
Okay, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to double check that. Okay. Dan, Dan, if you're going to talk up to the podium, please. Roger.
To follow up a little bit on what Sue was talking about, can you describe what your plans are from going, you know, where the new addition is right over to where the Sunoco Station?
Along this line here?
Right along Route One. What are your plans for, you know, landscaping right from there to the driveway?
As basically you come around this radial part, those are going to be flowering roses, and then as you get into this middle part where it's more fronting on Route One, those are going to be Shasta daisies, which are also going to be flowering plant. And where we're regrading that berm, there's going to be a river birch and then Sergeant Junipers. And then you'll also be able to see, as you kind of continue up into the site, those roses, as well as a, kind of like a riverstone bed with some larger boulders and additional plantings, roses and reed grasses. Basically, that's the conveyance system to get the stormwater into that pond.
Is that landscaping consistent with what you have currently on the other side of the driveway?
There's some bayberries in here, and I talked with the landscape architect, and, you know, the junipers are more hardy than the bayberries or bearberries, and that could be some of the issue is, you know, I've noticed as some of these landscape plans that are coming out in these smaller areas, they're using, you know, these junipers or plantings that are more hardy in those more confined spaces, something that won't need a lot of root mass, that then could be adversely impacted and will die off. These will be more of a hardy plant and an evergreen.
Don't they have flowers right now along the?
There's some addition, there are some roses along here and also along the side, yes.
Okay. And those Shasta, were they, Shasta lilies?
Daisies.
Daisies?
Yep.
Um, do they flower all summer long?
Um, I believe during the summer months.
That's all I have, I have a limited landscape.
That makes two of us. Nick?
Yeah, I think, I don't know if I overlooked it in all of the submissions, but the best I can find is the rendition of the third sign that you're going to be putting where the existing Sunoco is.
Yep.
Is that, is the best rendition we're going to see in the back of this packet?
That is basically kind of conceptual, only they were in the process of redoing how their signs were going to look. You know, once Mercedes-Benz has a final determination of what their signs will look like, it'll be part of a, you know... You know, once Mercedes-Benz has a final determination of what their signs will look like, it'll be part of a, you know, a sign permit that, you know, additional information will be forthcoming to the town.
And this third sign-
Can you refresh me? Is this over and above the allowable?
It is. It was part of their contract zone amendment. Our current ordinance has allowed two freestanding signs per lot. If you have a certain amount of frontage and certain separation, actually, you'll note that there are, that's this being the third, clearly, there are two existing signs, um, which went through sort of the tight plan review process and stuff.
So I think, you know, I'd like to take the board's temperature through comments or however, as to allowing a third sign. That, I mean, the rendition that I'm seeing there is- was a small classy type of little sign. What I don't wanna see happen out on Route One is another large, you know, I wanna see a- I don't wanna see a row of Mercedes signs, as however beautiful one may think they are. I don't wanna overpopulate that section of Route One with signage. I just don't think it's necessary, since you have two right near your entrance.
I- I-
Take the board's temperature.
We wanna give you a name, please?
Uh, Dan DeSato, the general manager of Prime Motors. I agree. I don't want that kinda sign either. Uh, the sign that you're looking at right now, I think the only change is gonna be the color. Uh, that's the basic concept of the sign. It's gonna be a lower, uh, sign than we have right now in the middle. Uh, and, uh, it's gonna have the Mercedes-Benz symbol on it, but, uh, it's probably gonna go from blue to black, 'cause that is the new image that Mercedes-Benz is going with.
Um, I think, you know, I think I'd like to hear from the board whether or not a third sign is something we want out there. Like I said, I mean, for me, they don't-
Well, can I say one thing? Uh, that third sign, when I originally put this, 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 uh, project together, that was, you know, I mean, it's trade-offs here. I'm buying a gas station for a lot of money, and I'm spending a lot of money on it, and there are trade-offs here, sure. I'm taking an eyesore. I'm taking a group of signs. It's gotta be probably five or six different signs on that property, and I'm making it a one, one small, you know, that's appealing sign, a Mercedes-Benz sign, and that's, uh, when I originally up, up, came to the town manager, to Dan, I mean, that was one of them. I said, is this viable? I mean, uh, the things I were looking for was parking, a third sign, and, uh, I think there's one other thing. I don't remember exactly what it was, but, uh, yeah, there's trade-offs here, absolutely. There are trade-offs.
And that's why I'd like the board to, at least through comments, weigh in on how they feel about a third sign. I mean, I, I probably, um, I'm not- I don't feel strongly as Susan does on landscaping, um. Well, the sign, I just don't want- I don't want Route One to be a row of signs, um, as best as we can predict.
The only thing I would comment is, remember, you have the Sunoco Station there with signs.
It does. It does, and I know that. And like I said, I don't think I have a strong opinion in one direction or another, but I do wanna hear the board's opinion-
Well, of course.
On something, a topic like that, that I don't wanna see overlooked.
So?
First of all, I don't think planning is making it better than it was. I think planning is taking what you have and making the most out of it. And I'm, second to landscaping comes signage. The one thing I always say when I drive by Mercedes-Benz is that, it's really classy signage. Signage is one of those things I never did understand. People have very rabid feelings about what's good signage and what isn't. But it's been proven that beating people up with signage doesn't work. It drives them away. One well-placed, really adequate sign is better than three. In this particular case, they're really beautifully designed. I don't think we need any more than we already have. It doesn't make any sense to me. We tell others, you know, it's just-
I think, I think where I'm coming from, um, that's where I'm- I wanna get concerned is, I don't have a final draft of, and although you can tell me that the sign's only gonna be four feet tall, and it's gonna look like that, and it's just gonna be black. When we go to do an approval, what you're really gonna get is a third sign, and I don't wanna see it be a twenty-foot sign. I don't have, I don't have any idea of how big this sign, this third sign, will actually be, which is why I do want the board's opinion on what they feel about a third sign in general. And if it is going to get approved, what I do want is some sort of limitation as to the size of this sign, um, would be my preference. So, having said that, that's, that's all I have for comments. I mean, I, you know, I applaud you guys on your efforts here and what you're trying to do, and, um, you know, pass it off to my board members. But that's the one area that I think I have concern with.
Can I ask the insured, the applicant, I mean, why we don't have the final dimensions of the sign? Sure.
Mercedes-Benz is in the process-
Would you please name?
Oh, my name is David Richards. I'm an architect with Gower and Turgeon Architects. Mercedes-Benz is in the process of creating a new branding package for their dealership. All of the decisions haven't been made, so the- it was our intention to put a sign at the edge of the property where there is a sign now, which will be dramatically smaller. It'll be on a stone base similar to the curvilinear stone wall that announces the property as you proceed from north to south on the property, so it'll be in keeping with that end of the property. And also, as you approach this property, you're approaching it from below, so it was our intention, our hope, to have a sign small in the corner. When I mean small, in the fibers, probably about yay-high, set back. It's not going to be a big pylon sign. Again, it's to mark the property when you're at the traffic light approaching, uh, towards it. It is a business selling things, and the idea of showing people that that's what we're doing from that direction. The pylon sign works very well approaching from north heading south. It does not work well heading from north or from south to north. So that, and there was a, you know, there's a sign there. There was an opportunity to reflect this, and it made sense for the dealership. And we also think it's more of a emblem and demarking the corner of the property in the beginning of the site than it is a large advertisement, and it will have, uh, I believe it'll say Mercedes-Benz, but that needs to be determined. But it's essentially just a graphic. And again, very nice to say.
Go ahead, Susan.
I'm assuming that if we were to give a passage of this, there would be a condition, and the condition would, well, the conditions would have to be above signage. And it would have to pass, it would have to brought in and passed. If we didn't, if, how do I say this? If you brought in to the, um, to staff, the final presentation of what you want for a sign. It is to be, um, staff, if they're uncomfortable, can bring it back to the board. Am I correct?
We can certainly draft it that way, yeah?
Yeah, I'd like to draft it that way, because we don't-
I'm sorry, Susan, I missed that.
But if we're not going to know right now in anything that we're going to sign, right, what the size of this is going to be, because of the size that I'm hearing about signs sounds fine, but there's nothing in writing. So all I'm saying is that when it does come to the, as a condition of approval, when it does come to staff, that if staff looks at it and says, I don't think this is what the board had in mind, they can bring it back to the board.
So we, absolutely, we can do that.
And may I add, that this graphic representation is very close to where-
No, but I'm not, at this point, I'm not talking about whether we should have it or what size it should be, because I'm saying we don't know. We have nothing from you that says what it's going to be. So it's gonna have to come to staff at some point, and when it comes to staff, if there's any question, I would feel best, as long as we just say, if we're not really crazy about it, and it has to come back to the-
Yeah, I think that's a good, great suggestion.
And let it go, because I'm sure it's gonna be fine.
Can I ask a clarifying question, 'cause I did have a post-draft conditions for the board to consider, and I'm trying to modify one of them based on the discussion that the direction the board wishes to go. So I understand, as I write this up, um, I heard that, so based, the fi- because, again, the, um, contract zone amendment allowed for the third sign. Really, it is up to this board in terms of the design and the size and scale of the, of the sign. And as I try to craft some of these details, to be sure we're capturing the, um, the desires, um, is that, I heard you mention, 'cause there is no reference in terms of how tall that is. Is that less than ten feet, or?
Yeah, yeah.
Would something, you know, in terms of maintaining a sign no greater than ten feet, would that type of language satisfy the board? I think, most importantly, and then-
Yes, yes. We're just wait- what they do is they make these in certain sizes. It will, we will choose one of the smaller sizes. It will be, it can be below ten feet without a problem.
Before we go any further, before I give it to you, Mike, let me say that I would be pushing Mercedes, because we're gonna put certain conditions and I'm in total agreement with Susan, uh, before you're gonna be able to do anything. And it's not gonna be a consent or an approval, uh, and then after the fact. It's gonna be before the fact. The part of the conditions are gonna be, we know what the sign is. So if I, you guys, I'd be pushing Mercedes, uh, as much as I possibly could to come up with exactly what the sign is gonna look, look like. Now, Mike?
Well, I was, on the subject of the sign, I would just, I would just ask that the applicant return to the board for that particular piece. And then we'll all get a good look at it, and, um-
Is that after we vote tonight?
Yeah, well, I mean, I don't see how that, that should or has to hold up everything else.
Is that after we vote?
So I would think that as a condition of approval, that the applicant return to the board for a final, um, if they decide to do a third sign, for a final approval on that sign. And then we can get all its dimensions, its colors, and-
We're trying to get them to not have to come back by saying they brought it to staff and staff didn't like it. But if you'd rather have them come back anyway, that's fine.
I'm of the opinion that, uh, if we set parameters and staff, you know, and the chair, when they're at their meeting, they're okay with it, I'm okay with it. What I don't wanna see is just a blanket third sign. That's really what I was driving at. Uh, saying, you know, the sign won't exceed six feet, well, you know, they come in with a seven-foot sign with, on a twelve-foot base. Well, I don't wanna see that either. So I think just general outlines, if they're telling me that it's gonna look similar to what I'm seeing in these renditions-
Absolutely.
Then I'm okay with putting a parameter to work within with staff and the chair, rather than force the applicant to come back before another full, full meeting. I think-
Yeah, and it's in our best interest to not have it sign large, because we, the whole purpose of this project is-
Visibility.
It's a play area, and it's visibility. So, what's that?
I think we're missing the point. It isn't that we want you to decide that. We're deciding about what we're going to put into what we're signing tonight.
Sure.
Mike? Uh, yeah, just to finish, I'm not all that comfortable with us giving, you know, parameters. I think it's best in our interest as a board, and I'm sure the applicant does, would not mind to just simply return for the purpose of the sign, assuming everything else is, is, uh, gonna pass tonight.
We've got more comments, so I don't know which of you wants to be up there.
Well, let me just say one thing, the sign is, the sign is going to be the Mercedes-Benz symbol as you see it there. It's not gonna be any higher than ten feet, like Dave explained. It's only to designate the frontage of the dealership, coming from the south to the north. You don't know it's a Mercedes-Benz dealership until you already pass the driveway. It's gonna be a tasteful sign. It's not gonna be orange or yellow, like some of the signs on Route One are. It's gonna be black, with a white Mercedes-Benz logo. So it'll be a tasteful sign.
Again, that's, you know, on behalf of the, of the board, it's still supposition, and that's the frustration that we're sensing. And, and we can do it one of two ways, and I wanna get on with things and get off the sign, but we can do it one of two ways. We can do it as Mike's suggesting and take it out right now and have you come back for approval, or we could put it in one of the conditions that says that, uh, you have to come to the, to the staff, and if they're not in agreement, then it has to come back to the board. But, but we understand everything that you think is going to happen, but the word, the key word here is think and not knowledge.
The quick question I have is, is we have to have all signs approved anyhow, don't we? I mean, that's part of the process. So we would come before the town with, you know, the design of the sign, its size, its location, and all details we have in the past. What's that?
It's a contract zone. I think it's a little different, too.
Is there a comment from Jay on this one?
It's a contract zone.
Sure, um, would you like-
Go ahead.
Um, yeah, I think that the, the conversation boils down to certainly, as the applicant just indicated, they do need to get, will need to get a sign permit. The, the- I think the question at hand isn't, is, is the board comfortable with staff reviewing it with conditions as maybe modified? Or is it a condition that the final design be approved by the board? Without getting into all the details, I mean, we could write some, as I think Mr. McGee noted, some parameters around if you want staff to review it. We can write some parameters around what that might look like. Otherwise, it can come back to the board. Staff is, will operate at the direction of the board, so.
Okay, let's leave the sign for a moment. We'll come back to it, I promise, but let's go on. Mike, other things.
Um, okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I think the applicant did a nice job addressing some of our concerns. I'm not very, um, um, I should say that, I think landscaping is, is fine. I would, I would suggest that you take Susan's comment in that, um, assuming you'll get approval tonight, that you might wanna just add it a little bit, add a little bit to the landscaping along the lines of what she's talking about. It would be also nice, you know, because this is a very sensitive place in Scarborough, and it is a contract zone. We don't, we don't lose sight of that, certainly. Um, meaning that the zone in of itself would not allow for this kind of operation. That's why the additional levels of approval and discussion on things such as signs and landscaping, um, that maybe a landscape architect, you know, should be part of the discussion, you know. I appreciate, you know, the, uh, the, um, the feedback we're getting as to what flowers when and what blooms and how high it grows, but with all due respect, coming from a landscape architect, it would, it would just have a little bit more of a, more of an impact to me. But visually, it looks fine to me. Um, the circle, the new, the new show drive area, um, I think it is important that it not be lawn, like we talked about last time, and I think that's what you're showing tonight, that it's gonna be some daisies, I guess you said, or low-growing ground type of, um, so. Certainly is an improvement over what is now there. Um, and, um, it's a, it's a great opportunity. I was on the board the first time that, um, it wasn't Prime, it was, uh, Performance Motors, and they brought that contract zone before us many years ago. And, um, and then Prime, of course, took that whole vision, that whole plan to, uh, to fruition and reality. And it, it's proven to be a really nice site, a nice welcome addition to that gateway of Scarborough, and I appreciate all that Prime has done there to maintain it. And this is just furthering that whole statement. So, um, I say good luck. I'm not opposed to it at all. Again, I would rather that we, um, that we move forward and we, uh, I'd like to, I'd like to see this approved tonight, and I'd like to see you return with final designs on that third sign. And my sense is that that would be a pretty easy thing to do, so. Thank you.
Sir? I'm okay with the project, certainly an improvement in what's going on. Uh, we honestly beat this sign thing to death. I just, uh, I'm okay with it going to staff, and part of that condition is they don't even get a building permit until it signs approved? Is that part of the condition we've got written?
Sure can be.
Make it. Let's make it. So it's gonna force you guys to give us that sign thing quickly, obviously.
Okay, anything else, sir? Okay, um, I'm, I'm, go ahead.
Could I, um, I know we're sort of talking about the details of the signs. There was another comment in staff comments that I want to make sure the board, uh, at least is discussing in terms of the details of the car wash, the architectural plans. At the last meeting, we talked quite a bit about the car wash, and I think the applicant had sort of laid some of the board's concerns, but the plans that were submitted didn't reflect that conversation. The details of the car wash weren't provided. I think there was also discussion about switching floor area of the service bay to have a service door reoriented towards the back of the building, and there wasn't a floor plan that depicted that reorientation. So, um, you know, depending on how the board wants to treat those details, I think it's similar to the conversation with the sign. It's, you know, does the board want to-
I took away my thunder.
Oh, I'm sorry. I should've waited. I should've waited. Um, so.
The modifications have been made. Um, we now have the, all the work for the service bay, the service bay was addressed. From the front side to the back side of the building, the trailer down in elevation. In a moment, um, these doors are still with the other doors. They're overgrown doors. They look like storefront, you know, windows from distance. Um, there was concern about the car wash. Unfortunately, I put a line on it that depicted the pieces of it. It doesn't look like that. It doesn't look like that, you can't see the underlying structure. It's just how the piece of plastic was, but, um, that's an area on my part. So it- it will look like a homogeneous, you know, monolithic form.
So it's gonna be coordinated with the existing structures? Okay.
And we're bringing the- the banding around and applying it to the top, you know, to the top of it to get that... To get a proper, I mean, uh, continuing work of, uh, the building treatment side.
In terms of the, uh, I- I get- I think I'm a- the stone apron around the building and the sort of corner treatment, is that also gonna be...
It wasn't working.
Yes, um, the corner treatments as they are now will come around. They- they don't go around all the way around the back.
Sure.
Um, the stone base, that's what they say, will be continued in the...
So that'll go on the car wash addition, not just...
Not on the car wash addition. It's kind of technically a little odd because this- this is a classic sweep that we've spelled all the way down. If you do a car wash, we're now preparing a couple of parts to provide just to, you know, break foot on it, or some armpit water and whatnot. So, um, we- we chose to have it go down around the... More for function. So we brought it around too and pick it up all the way around the back. We just didn't do the color.
Another one of the comments that staff made was the, uh, uh, resubmitting floor plans depicting the internal use of the expansion.
Storage, they say, look for the washing equipment and line of day, and then the car wash is done.
I- I guess that, you know, I've- I've lost most of my hair on my head. Why this wasn't included, to make it clearer?
This drawing wasn't a package. What was missing from the drawing would be the note, which just indicates actually to... Everything will run, uh... And if they are, oh, they're a square plate. Some kind of stuff, uh, monolithic sweep system and...
Okay, and I- I know that, uh, you've- you've got, uh, permission because it came up the last meeting to- to hold, uh, certain events there. But, uh, uh, that you're still gonna need permits to- from the corner enforcement office. That's understood, right? Okay, um, anything else? Okay.
What?
You touched on the highlights?
Yeah, I think we did. And how's your negotiation going with the DOT?
That, uh, it's ongoing. It's- it's up at DOT. They started with the Scarborough office. Um, basically, they revert back up to the Augusta office. Um, I checked on the status, and it's- it's still ongoing. It's been tough to try to get something out of DOT lately.
Okay, I'm- just for the board's, uh, understanding, this is just an addition. They already have a contract with- with DOT, so it's not any...
The- the reason that they- a revision is needed is we're- we're currently not going to increase any discharge to their system based on what was there back in two thousand and two before Prime Mercedes was built. The reason for the revision is that the way they define this license agreement and discharge connection was very specific to a dealership site to include only a certain number of parcels, and it currently does not indicate the Sunoco parcel because that was not owned by One Thirty Seven U.S. Realty. So it's- the only revision needed is to include that one parcel into it.
Um, yeah, on a positive note, since we've been that way, getting rid of that Sunoco station and getting rid of the curv- curved cuts, to me, is one of the best things that we could possibly do for this town. Um, it never would've passed muster today, I can assure you of that. All right, let's go back to the last point and how we're gonna do this. Um, I have a condition in front of me. The only sort of gray area is do we want, as far as the third sign, to go in- in the route of... It's gotta be submitted to staff, and if staff's happy, uh, that we're happy, or do we want it that they have to come back and a separate issue for sign approval? What's the consensus of the board? I know your- your point is...
Yeah, I would just ask the board that, you know, you know, I- I look at the site plan as presented, and I would be in favor of the site plan whether there was a third sign or not. Um, I'm happy approving a third sign and its design and construction. It'd be a condition that they return and show us what those details are, so we have an opportunity to, uh, provide input.
Is that the sentiment?
No, mine. I- I don't see what, um, what could come back to us a month from now that is going to prevent us from approving this project.
No, we're staying separate from the... We're leaving the sign out.
I know. I, you know, I look at the length of our- our board schedules currently, um, the time of the applicants, the time for staff. I- I just don't see the absolute need. I think we could sit here as a board and set up the parameters and know that, quite frankly, we're dealing with a franchise who's not going to, um, represent themselves, uh, on a physical appearance poorly in the community to begin with. Secondly, if we have a set parameters, I do trust that our staff and our chairperson, uh, could adequately make the decision as to whether or not the rendering that we've already seen and all kind of nod our heads at is reflected into what they're proposing to build. I don't think that requires more board time. That's my- that's my personal opinion.
Thank you.
I'm okay with staff.
I am too, so... If you put that in there.
Just- just to cl- the- the reason why I suggested that they come back is because we start talking about widths and heights and colors, and it looked like we were leaning towards, you know, having a large discussion and possibly a page and a half of descriptors to give them some boundaries. And it was a lot easier just to say, why don't you just come back? Now, um, i- if we're not gonna get involved in all that, then I would be in favor of staff, uh, reviewing it.
Well, there's certain parameters they have to go by anyway, uh, the- the design standards for- from the town.
This is a contract zone, and we have an opportunity to, you know, offer additional input as to what, uh, over and above what our sign ordinance says. But again, I'm okay with it.
Mr. Chair, when you get to the third condition, uh, I have drafted some additional language to try to capture some of the discussion here tonight, so I can- I can do the third condition if you...
All right, hearing- hearing that. I move to approve the amended site plan application of One Thirty Seven U.S. Route One Realty LLC for the expansion of the parking lot and a building addition as proposed in materials submitted on their behalf by Sepego Technics, planned dated- set dated four twenty-four fifteen. The proposed expansion has, uh, received approval by the Town Council for the necessary contract zone amendments permitting the proposed site modification. And based on the board's review, the applicant has- has met the review criteria of the site plan review ordinance. The plans are hereby approved with the following conditions. One, prior to the start of construction, the applicant shall provide the planning department with a copy of the revised agreement with DOT for stormwater discharge into the Route One right- right of way. Two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the architectural plan set dated four twenty-seven fifteen shall be revised and submitted to the planning department for review and approval of the details of the car wash portion of the building expansion. Materials and architectural features shall coordinate with the existing building materials. Three...
Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall provide details of the proposed freestanding sign package as well as depicting the exact location, the existing Sunoco sign location, to the planning department for review and approval. The third sign location, uh, or sign, or I'm sorry, the proposed third sign shall be consistent with the concept depicted on Sheet A dash S K R in terms of size and scale.
Okay. Four, prior to utilizing the site for the accessory use functions permitted per the contract zone agreement, the applicant shall secure any necessary permits through all other applicable agencies and departments. And five...
There is no five.
That was it, okay, there is no five. Do I hear a second? Second? Any discussion? Yes, sir.
I'm just a li- you know, I- I'd be interested to hear from the applicant whether that condition, condition we call number three, uh, providing details, uh, uh, on the third sign, are you able to obtain all that in time, uh, to begin the construction of the, uh, of the improvement? Is that gonna hold you up at all? Because again, I think, you know, whether, even if- if there was no third sign, I'm not hearing that the board would be n- not in favor of this, uh, of the site.
That's a good question, though, Mike. That's a- that's a good question. I- 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 I'd like to hear the answer to that too.
I'll speak with Mercedes-Benz this week and- and get determination on the sign, what the parameters are, and we'll get something to you hopefully by the end of the week.
Could certainly consider that this report concerns modifying to prior to the issuance of a sign permit, um, rather than a building permit.
I- I would just...
Frankly, staff might offer that. That probably does make more sense.
Yeah.
A sign permit is something separate and distinct from a building permit. So this would permit the rest of the activities moving forward, and the sign can happen as it happens, but not until they get a sign permit.
I- I would be, would the boards indulge it? I would prefer that, the, uh, the- the condition first.
Sign permit, yeah.
Just take out prior to the issuance of the building permit, be taken out of number three.
Have to replace the word building, uh, prior to the issuance of the sign permit.
Okay, that's good.
Okay, down here? Yes. Good point, Mike, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, thank you.
Um, do you accept the...
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
How you doing there? You okay?
Yeah.
I'll leave you. No, no, I mean, do you want to take a break?
Oh, I'm good.
Okay. Um... You want to take a break? Okay, and I can- all right, we're- we're going to take a... Oh, you're gonna take a break, and okay, now, we're- we're not, he's gonna recuse himself for a minute or two.
Okay. I think Roger's cut out for a second.
Uh, okay.
Yeah, Roger's out.
Number eleven. Tina and Eric Richardson request a preliminary subdivision review for a four-lot residential subdivision titled None Such Estates. Mr. Chase?
Sure, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, see, this is a application, which is known for a four-lot subdivision in RF District. Actually, the property has RF zoning, shore land zoning, and stream protection two district on it. Um, the board saw this as a sketch plan maybe two meetings ago, if I'm not mistaken. Um, actually, when we originally saw this, the applicant was before you, uh, originally thinking of a nine-lot subdivision. I think, uh, as they dug into the details and characteristics of the site, um, they've now modified that to be a four-lot subdivision. Um, as I'm sure staff will note, uh, I'm sorry, as the board will note, staff has a host of comments, um, particularly in light of the public works director's, uh, concerns, as well as Woodard and Kern, our peer reviewed civil engineers. We think there's a number of design elements that require additional, uh, work before the board can take any formal action on this. So really, uh, staff's recommendation is that we really see this as a highlighted sketch plan discussion. Continue, uh, talking about the merits or the, you know, the basic parameters of development, uh, but certainly there's a lot of level of detail here that- that needs to be, uh, considered. Um, I will note that the applicant has requested a few waiver items that certainly probably works at least discussing, giving direction to the board on in terms of, pardon me, uh, landscape plan, uh, traffic analysis, and any off-site improvements. Um, so certainly, I think, those are at least worthy of discussion this week, I presume, but that's, um, not gonna be all my detailed comment here. Certainly, those can be addressed as we move along in the process, so...
That's sure, I'll turn it back to you. Thank you. Open it up.
Hello, my name's Jason Vafiyatus with Vafiyatus Engineering Design. I'm here on behalf of, uh, Tina and Eric Richardson. And, uh, I do believe we might have, uh, public comment here. Did you wanna open up for that, uh, prior to...
No, I'd rather hear from you, and then we'll open to public comment.
Uh, as Jay, uh, summarized quite, uh, precisely, uh, we have gone out, uh, and picked up, as you know, at sketch plan, we didn't have, uh, boundary survey in yet or, uh, finalized wetlands. Uh, we have done that, and, uh...
And you'll notice the, uh, you probably won't notice, but the- the site kind of got a lot narrower. We thought we had more land up on this side. Really what it did was it pushed the outcars further into the site. It sort of required a- the- the real buildable land that we were targeting sort of got a little bit smaller. Uh, there's some really nice, uh, flat holes and, uh, real great pieces of property up here. But in talking with Mike, I've seen the impact that would be there by going up there. Uh, we felt that it was best to just keep everything up to the front and, uh, take all of the land out here and get it, uh, as we thought, well, previously through the town or another entity that was interested in making sort of an open state for, uh, along, uh, the None Such District. Um, and- and really, it's just, uh, with, uh, the complications of this division, I understand that it seems to occur in the access and along the initial hill road versus really, uh, I think that we'll get into here, that there are a number of, uh, staff and, uh, peer reviews on it, which, um, we're out there actually getting more information for topography and, uh, investigating a little more, and we'll have a lot more information. We'll be able to cut out the comments, I think, in meeting with the staff. Uh, in light of trying to keep this short, uh, if anyone has any questions, if you want, I'd like to take them. Um, as far as the waivers go, I actually, we do have a traffic engineer on board now, Dave, and, uh, we'll be more appropriate in time that we're trying.
Okay, thank you. Now, as noted, this is open for public discussion, so I will now open it to the public. Yeah, uh, name and address, please.
Uh, my name is Herbert Prey, and I'm at, uh, Eighty Mitchell Hill Road.
And I'm his wife, Karine.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board members for giving us an opportunity to speak tonight. Uh, we've presented a letter to Jay that I'm assuming you've received already. Uh, we know our time is limited, so we'll make this as quick and easy as possible. We have a lot of concerns about this project and how it's gonna affect our property. Our main concern is the Arbor Lane and how it'll affect our property. A concern about the blasting to create this road of the proposed name being Arbor Lane.
It's- it's south of, it's south of, um, obviously, where- where this location is right here. And the point of the corner of our house, it looks like a road, is roughly seventy-five feet. And there's a lot of ledge, you know, I don't know if that's a chance, but, well, they actually look at it. But there's a lot of ledge right that they're keeping. And, uh, the blast, I believe, is correct, is a rock, uh, blasting, if needed, in this area right here.
Now, mind you, um, that area that my husband's pointing to is a very steep slope. Um, so we're- we're concerned about that area needing to be blasted to create this road. One of the other concerns we have is the runoff from the top of the hill coming down to the bottom of the hill where we're located.
We're- we're also, uh, concerned about if there is blasting in this area. Um, our weather is, uh, and as you all can imagine, a house without water, if this doesn't stir hot water, a house without water is- there's no house at all. And in- and in twenty-six years, we've had, I want to test it three times, and it's been perfect water. So, a- as you can understand, we're very concerned of any blasting going on in that area.
Uh, the stormwater. Uh, we're concerned about the drainage plan and how it affects our property and how it's gonna be directed to the Mitchell Hill Road. From our understanding, there's gonna be a culvert alongside of the Mitchell Hill Road, which we, uh, the- will be directing the water towards the river in our property, being in the middle.
Um, it looks like that the culvert is not going all right here. Now, please, please keep in mind that this is the steep and, uh, most of this runoff comes down through here. Um, the public works can- can certainly speak that this section right here, uh, they're struggling to try to keep this from collapsing. Uh, in fact, last- last fall, this whole section right down to our driveway, just, the whole thing just kinda collapsed. About fifty feet of it just collapsed. And it sounds like that the drainage is gonna come down through here and into a culvert to add to this, uh, this whole front- front area. So that's another concern that we have, how that's gonna affect our power.
One of our other main concerns is Lot One, which is directly behind our property, is at a low point, which will ha- already has a standing pond, I guess you could say, that's pretty significant throughout the whole year. Um, we understand that film will be brought in, but that will now make our property again at the low- low point.
Yeah, this- this whole area right here, um, if you do the water crossing right now, it is- it's very, very soft. It has standing water and it has- that standing water for, um, well, this area right here. It's one of the kids, not going, um, and if this and right here is brought out, you know, it's gonna force some of the drainage to come in because I know that you- the people who did the survey, um, said it was a superior smell around and they did assumptions. Um, yeah, in this area right here, there's- there's a lot of ground, you know, cuddling with water that's drained back here. And they come in and fill this in, try to bring it up out of the water table. I'm afraid there's a lot of this is gonna start coming in anyway. And we, over the years, shortly after we moved here, we had a- a swelling kind of cut into our- our grass to help direct some of that in- in- into the side of our property where the national plant is right here. So, it's good to understand. We're really concerned about the drainage as well. Okay.
Uh, we were wondering, um, will all the trees be stripped from these four lots? We wanna know if this can be any kind of a buffer between the lots and our property, more particularly Lot One. We'd like to know if there's an association fee? And we're curious as to why this traffic analysis was omitted from the application. We understand it was a waiver, but we- we're still curious as to why there was no traffic analysis.
I- I think probably all of- all of the, uh, members here probably know Mitchell Hill. They probably know that Mitchell Hill itself is a treacherous hill. Um, we've had bus drivers refuse to drive down that hill at one time. Every year, I grab my shovel and I look- I look outside the d- the window and I can, uh, see someone going off the road. This happens two to three times a year. I'll look to my wife and I'll say, "Well, I'll grab my shovel and I'll go out there and help this in the ditch." It's a treacherous, uh, it's a treacherous hill. And I would encourage the board members to crest the top of that hill and just slow down and look in your rearview mirror. That hill is traveled, uh, a lot in the morning and in the afternoon as the community's going back and forth to work. And they're going down that hill sometimes fifty miles an hour or more. And I- and just bring yourself over that crest and look in your rearview mirror and imagine s- you're waiting for someone to come up the hill so you can make a left-hand turn on Arbor Lane. Um, it's a- it's- it's- it's a weird feeling. Um, so tha- that's why we brought up why the traffic study wasn't- wasn't- was omitted. That was another concern we had.
We'd like to know about the, um, screening for the headlights turning onto the mi- um, Arbor Lane and how it would affect our home.
Yeah, that people turning in into here. Now that, this is the hardest, the hard place to look at because it almost like it's a flat lawn. But as you turn into here, the headlights point right at the side of the floor of our house with a seventy-five feet. And we were just curious if there was any screening. We was wondering if there was any thought put into the screening along this area right here. 'Cause this- this looks like, and I just walked before we came here, then I see that there's new- new stakes put in here. Um, and it looks like people have come this way and the headlights have pointed back out there and then they turn here, the same thing. We're gonna get that now, better from right on this side right here. And this is roughly seventy-five feet behind that hill. And it's at that second floor level because the- the hill is so steep. So I'm just curious if- if there was any thought brought before the- the screening on that side of the road.
Uh, one of our no- another major concern we have is the, uh, snow plowing in the winter and how, um, they'll plow Arbor Lane and where that snow would go. Right now, if they were to blast that hill, it appears that there'll be ledge on one side of the road-
A sheer ledge.
-which would make the snow plowing on our property, basically.
And we- and we-
Or heading in our direction.
And we have enough issues with water draining into our backyard. We're just- that's another concern, I'm honest.
Um, also, wooden fences proposed on the led- on the ledge side of the road. We would like to know who will maintain that. We are concerned about the foul weather and people turning left onto Arbor Lane. Uh, that is a dangerous road. Seen many people go off the road. So wondering, you know, just we're concerned about, it- we probably shouldn't be concerned, but we're concerned about how people are gonna turn, coming down the hill, turning left onto Arbor Lane, trying to slow down on that hill when it's slippery. I've gone down that road many times sideways. Um, so I know- I know what it's like.
Not to mention, uh, when- when she comes home from her afternoon commute slowing down that hill, people have crested that hill so fast that they did not have time enough to slow down, not realize that she's- she has her blinker on to turn left into our driveway and they actually pass her going down the hill, um, creating a near mess many times. And I've seen it.
Mm.
I've seen it myself.
I already talked about this one, did. Um, we were wondering why the main DP- DEP was excluded from the application. We'd like to know if the fire department and public works has weighed in on the safety concerns of this road and as well as maintaining Arbor Lane.
Yeah, yeah, that- one of our next items was, uh, I'd like to urge all the planning men- planning board members to read the letter that we sent to Jay, if you haven't already.
We have copies of that, by the way.
We have copies of that, okay.
Uh, this will not only affect us, but the- it'll have the effect on the town and the future arguments of None Such Estates. If this is not done right, let's put the burden- let's not put the burden to fix it with the tax values of Scarborough. This also has a large environmental impact, a safety impact, and a stormwater impact, as well as the entire natural landscape of the area will be changed. Thank you for letting- allowing us to speak.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I'll close it to the public and open it up to the board and hopefully we'll address some of the concerns and comments from the public. Nick, you wanna start?
Um-
Hey, remember, we're only, uh, because of the complexity of this, uh, just to take the pressure off a little bit, uh, starting with you is, uh, just discussing this. This is just discussion and so-
And I- I'm gonna be- I'm gonna be real honest. My- my first impression, uh, when I had to pack it and I opened this up and I got the staff comments, my first impression was you weren't ready to be here today. And- and that's me being bluntly honest with the amount of, um, notes that we had of items that you needed to be prepared for. I didn't quite feel like you were, um, supposed to be here right now. That said, I do understand that a broader overall sketch review commentary will help you at some point. Um, I personally think that this is one of those projects where, um, I'm not saying officially, I think the board should visit the site, although I think we should consider, um, a walkthrough in a site like this.
Funny you should have to, uh, say that, 'cause I got a big bowl of letters over here.
Read your minds, read your letters, yeah. I- I- this is one of those properties, uh, and we get them occasionally where a site visit would- would probably do, uh, the board a great deal of, uh, help, especially with the education part of what this looks like. I mean, I can, uh, from what I can read here, it looks like you have a- an eighteen-foot descent down Arbor Lane over a three hundred and something foot length. So, you know, it appears to be a sol- i- it's- the numbers are great, but it's not gonna really impact me personally until I get there and see it and then I can really tell you what eighteen f- a foot drop over a three hundred foot length really looks like. And, um, you know, and it- so I- I would ask the board to consider that and I'm glad you picked up on that too, uh, Ron. And as far as, uh, I believe it was one of the lots was noted to, um, uh, was it Lot Three? That is not in compliance with the frontage? Is there any reason we can't get that into compliance if you were to present a plan?
Yes, it- we can work that out. That was, uh, that was a miss on- on my part, um, missing that the town doesn't recognize frontage on the blunt end of the turnaround. We knew you didn't recognize frontage on the- the actual tee, the hammerhead turnaround, but it's just an extension of the- the road by twenty-five feet to pick up fifty feet on that side.
Right, and- and help me just clarify something real quick. The out parcel, is this drawn in stone? Has this been signed? This is the piece of property you have? Or is this out parcel currently sitting there, waiting to happen if this plan goes through?
No, the- the sellers of this property at large were, uh, in a very quick hurry to- to make a deal and unload it. And so what we- what the lawyers and we had- we had to do was create, uh, a parcel that met current zoning for two acres, not part of a subdivision, and cut that off. So that- that is, this is in stone.
That is in stone, okay.
That's been recorded.
That's what I wanted to know. I didn't know if those lines were able to be moved based on the overall, uh, outcome of a project like this, so-
There might be some things we could do with easements, I think, going back to them, but as far as lands, no.
Um, I think, uh, just from a design perspective, the, um, I don't think I like, not saying it's wrong, I don't think I personally like being the hammerheads cut into properties like that, but that's probably just a personal preference thing more than anything. Um, I see- I see your driveways. How- what's the distance? I don't know if you have that. What's the distance on, I believe it's Lot Three. Now, this page I'm not looking on does not have the lot number.
The distance from?
Uh, Lot, yeah, it's Lot Three's driveway. What's the difference from the back of the hammerhead to his driveway?
Uh, that's probably about, uh, eighteen feet.
And just, uh, do we know if that's sufficient to the fire department and how that- how that works?
Typically, what, and- and this is a schematic that we do have drawn up and I- I don't think, I actually did email that out, so my comments said they will. Um, we- we, um, limit driveway locations twenty-five feet from the beginning of the hammerhead and then you can't have a driveway. Then there's a window where you can have a- a driveway and then the last twenty-five feet of the hammerhead you can't have. And that's for winter operations primarily. Place to push snow, so-
So currently that-
That will be something we- driveway is not in the problem.
And with the extension of that hammerhead, actually, it, you know, we create a little more space in there. That problem probably goes away.
Um, I think there's a lot to take into consideration and again, I- I'm gonna pass off to the next board member, but fr- from my mind, I think a- a site visit would be helpful here and then, um, additionally, I, you know, I look forward to seeing a- a more cleaned up version, um, for us to review. There's, I think there's still a lot of question marks here, so-
Yeah, and we- we've got, uh, as I'll note, the dis- topography is, uh, is aerial and we've actually, the- the reason the stakes are out there is we've gone up and picked up all the topography through here and we'll be able to fine tune a much better design for the next point and as well as incorporate and meet with town staff on, um, what they'd like to see happen here and maybe it's an opportunity to work with the town and maybe try to clean up a little bit down through here.
And I- and I think, um, the next time, uh, you come here, I think it would behoove you to try to help alleviate maybe some of the, uh, butters' concerns-
Oh, oh, definitely.
And address them at some-
And I plan on speaking with Mr. Mrs. Prey, too, and try to-
Be a good forum, thank you.
Yep, absolutely. Awesome.
Roger? Um, thank you. Uh, I agree with Nick, uh, I think it's important we have a sidewalk on this, um, especially to get a- a feel for what the PRAES are talking about.
Yes, and- and- and they're probably not exaggerating. I mean, this road is, unfortunately, the- the site distance as defined by an MDOT doesn't usually take into account vertical change, you know, usually it's based on speed limit in- in site distance. Um, and I've actually got some ideas on maybe how we can maybe create a little more awareness of- of that. You know, not only this proposed road, but there are driveways down here and as the- the PRAES were talking about that, um, I've been on this, I've been out for this parcel quite a bit and I understand that and I'm very sensitive to those- those concerns and I have a few ideas I'd like to run by public works about what we can do maybe with signage or, uh, even like one of those blinking, uh, solar panel signs that, on the top of this hill that promotes like, you know, new traffic patterns or left-handed turn coming up that raises some awareness to the- the travelers on this road that there's something going on, you know, past the crest of this hill and I- I think that'd be a good conversation to have with, uh, public works.
Um, I've lived in town for thirty-five years and I- I don't recall ever being on this road before, but I went there to visit the site today and, um, uh, but first I read the, uh, the public works director's comments about going backwards so he has sand on the road, so he (laugh)- and I couldn't believe that- that is really some road.
It is.
So I think, uh, I think it would benefit us greatly to go out there and take a look at it and- and see what these folks are talking about and- and, um, and then go from there. Susan?
Um, I agree, this is very much a beginning. Very much beginning. And I'm not even going to touch all of the public works concerns because I'm sure that you and public works will become very good friends in the next few weeks. Um, I'm a great lover and believer in, um, walks and sometimes I take them and nobody else cares and people come to me and wanna know who I am and what I'm doing and, you know, but it's always worthwhile until you get your feet on the soil, you have really no clue to what's gonna- what's gonna be happening. So I would like to have staff with, um, the applicant kind of schedule that as soon as possible. Uh, well, I don't mean that, before they come back. Sometime in the process before they return. Um, I appreciate the, um, comments. I think that it always helps to know these things upfront. I encourage applicants to go out and knock on doors if necessary. If people don't come to you, you need to go to them because that's where the rubber hits the road in terms of what we believe and whether or not it's gonna be successful. Um, I'll wait until I hit the tight lock till I have anything else to say. Thank you.
Uh, I don't have much to add, uh, that my colleagues haven't already mentioned. Uh, I think it's also important that might- might provide us with some narrative that allows us to understand better what the possible effects of blasting, what kind of blasting will- will be done and what kind of, um, guarantees might be put forth should, uh, should, uh, post blast, the experiences are a little bit different for the neighbors. Um, I, I'm in favor of sidewalks, but I, but, um, I think we, we may be premature in going out and seeing the site before we get a little bit more feedback from, uh, some of the ideas you have, uh, and some of the discussions you will have already had with Public Works, et cetera. So, um, it would be, um, to my benefit anyway, if I was to walk this site with you, you would be explaining to me those kinds of discussions that have been taking place and what kind of improvements or, uh, mitigating efforts, uh, you would have already considered.
And I think the importance of the sidewalk, I, I think a primary sort of, sort of the first issue here is, is that, is the existing conditions of Mitchell Hill Road and, and that sort of, and, and maybe that, you know, a few of you have gone out and driven it 'cause you haven't, you didn't really know the road and you really get a sense of it. And then secondary, but not really less important, is the con, you know, what can we do to, uh, alleviate any sort of impacts that happen to, uh, eighty Mitchell Hill Road, uh, down here? And, um, it's certainly very open to, you know, I'm very sympathetic to their position and, um, what we can do within, you know, some screening, our ravities, um, you know, if, I believe the applicant would like to do something sort of nice at the entrance as much as we can and, and if we can sort of incorporate that with, with providing them with a little more privacy, uh, that's definitely something we, we'd explore.
Um, I think that's it for now. Good, good luck, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, uh, yeah, I've got some comments. Um, I'm certainly, as I said, I had in capital letters here, sidewalk, and I'm sort of torn between doing it before the fact or, you know, as, as Mike just said, you know, there are so many problems associated with this project. I mean, when, when I read through it, to me it sounded like you were trying to put a round peg through a square hole in, in, in the location. And, uh, I'm sort of wishy-washy as to which comes first, the cat or the horse, but I'll go along with the sentiment of the board in, in that direction. Uh, but in addition, and I appreciate the comments, uh, from, from the, the abutter, um, you know, I don't know if we go out there and we take a look at it and say there's no sense in going any further in our opinion, or have some of these issues answered and then go out there. Um, again, I'll go with the sentiment, but D E P, I think, needs to be brought into this thing and I, I certainly would not have been in favor of wavering the traffic thing because, uh, you know, I, I, when Mike Shaw throws up some roadblocks, that really catches my attention because, uh, he usually doesn't. I mean, he may not like everything we approve, but he isn't as adamant in his stand as he seems to be with this particular project. Uh, and I also, uh, would, in current, uh, uh, very skeptical, uh, about stormwater. And so, you know, those are two be, big factors, uh, right at the outset, in addition to all the other issues that go along with this particular project. Um, so, you know, right now, I, I, I'm, I'm with my other board members. I mean, this is in its infancy stages, to say the least, but what is the consensus of the board to re, uh, what?
I, I think Mike makes a lot of sense because we could go out there, I mean, I'm, I'm eager to go out there and see the site and everything, but it would make more sense to go out there after you've had a chance to talk to Mike Shaw and, and remedy, or at least come up with some of the, um, you know, concerns that these folks have.
Sure.
And I think you have as well, you know?
Yeah, and, and...
Wait a minute, can you just...
Go ahead, Sue.
I don't think we need to be doing this seriously. We want a sidewalk. It's their responsibility to give us all the information they think we need on a sidewalk.
My, my question to you, from my education...
I would, I'd like to go first and I'd see what's there and if, if they care about us coming, they will have ready for us anything that we might ask questions about. That's, I, I don't think we have to tell them what it is we need. We just make an appointment, we go out and they're qualified to answer the questions. And if they don't, well, then it just slows up their process.
Uh, you have much more experience at this than I. It's, no offense, you've been around longer than I have.
Well, look at me, of course.
But, uh, do you think that going out in this particular instance before we have some of these facts will give us enough insight?
Yeah, I think we, I think we need to go and see the road.
I respect that.
I think we need to see the wetlands. I think we need to understand where the, where the residents that live there now are. And if the applicant has got the time to go out with all that we've done tonight and get some kind of idea, you know what we're gonna be looking for, maybe they will have some answers. And if not, we're not gonna do anything until we do get the answers, so it'll just slow them up. You know what?
Nick, what do you, what, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm on the fence. I think I'm with you. I mean, some of these things I think should have probably been addressed before we got too deep into this, um, but I do think, uh, a sidewalk is, I mean, if this is going to come back to us, I mean, I, I guess my hesitation would be if they're gonna go back and they can't get us everything we need and all the comments and they're not gonna be satisfied, then don't waste more time going out for a walk. But if you're confident enough that this is gonna get remedied one way or another and what it is is for us to go out and see it, then I'm okay with doing the walk. I mean, I, I think I defer to Susan and her experience and say, if it, if it's still worthwhile to go for the walk, uh, at this point in time, then I, we go for the walk.
I think we should go for the walk. I agree with you, Susan. Thank you for your comment too. Um...
Yeah, bring some experience too.
I forgot you had...
Not much.
I, I know, and not much, no. Um...
What, what is your experience? I'm sorry, Mike.
No, 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 I don't mind going out for a walk. Also, you know, I, I, I would not be opposed to that. I, I just think personally would benefit more that if, um, I'm sorry, I forgot your first name. If Jason was able to, um, orate for us some of the discussions he's had with the, um, uh, different parties.
Well, maybe...
As we walk, as we walk and look and ask questions, he'd be in a better position to ma, have those answers. So I, I think it's just better that he says, "Yeah, I'm, I'm prepared for that sidewalk" as opposed to us setting a date and him trying to meet that deadline to have those answers, that's all.
Whatever.
Well, I would think maybe your initial maybe super, I mean, these certainly, these aren't things that can't be hell happening simultaneously. I can be getting answers in between time unless you schedule a sidewalk for tomorrow.
And we have two sidewalks?
You don't need everybody to go on a sidewalk, so, you know.
What do you think, Jake?
And, um, I think it's just, I think it's gonna take us a couple of weeks to find a suitable date that we can get Plan Board members in that amount of time. I'm confident that I can get the Public Works Director and Winter and Current Planning Staff together with, with Jason to have a pre discussion. That way we can know when we're out at the site visit, yes, I can address this design plot, or nope, this is a design plot, I'm gonna ask for a waiver for it, and here it is. So I think that's really, um, so, yes, we can be pushing...
And the only other thing I wanna add to that, and thank you. The only other thing is some of the answers to the concerns I, I would like to have while we're doing that sidewalk, 'cause there are certain things you can have answers to at that time.
I, I don't think those any less importantly than, than your comments, really. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, we wanna, when something's done, it, you know, it should stand up on its own. Um, and certainly the waivers, there's no reason why those waivers need to stand, you know. I, I think, as far as that, uh, Ronald, Mr. Chair, I think that you mentioned the M D P, that I sort of misspoke. Typically, we engineers think of M D P permitting as stormwater site location. There is a, a main general permit, which is a permit by rule, which, uh, this would trigger and that's typically a form you fill in and you send in before you construct and, and, you know, that's typically a, and it, what do they call it? An administrative, uh, permit. So, uh, that was on me to sort of, sort of gloss over that. Uh, because these lots are gonna be marketed, um, and sold as, you know, vacant lots, that the applicant is not creating more than an acre of impervious area by himself as an entity and therefore there's no requirement for a stormwater. However, your ordinance may require, you know, the D E P standards anyway, so, and that's certainly, all those things are, you know, the, the stormwater issues respective to here are, are, are easily remedied. Um, and working with Public Works and the abutter here, you know, we'll look at this and try to bring up, you know, a much better plan of attack.
And so we'll set up a, a sidewalk and Jay, Jay will be in touch with you and he will do a survey of the board to see what would be convenient for the board.
Yep.
And we'll go from there.
Thank you very much. Have a great time.
The last agenda item, which is actually agenda item number eight. Dunston Properties LLC requests sketch plan review for mixed use development at the intersection of Route One and Stewart Drive.
Just, just by way of overview, um, this is applications before you for sketch plan discussion, uh, for two properties that are in the T V T district, the Town Village, um, Center District, uh, one of the communities, uh, mixed use, higher density, uh, commercial and residential zones. Um, between the two properties exists the existing right of way that provides a secondary means of access to the Dunston Crossing subdivision, which folks are probably aware of the current access off of, uh, Broad Turn Road. Um, as I stated, this is a sketch plan review. Given the scope of the development, this application will ultimately come before the board through a plan development review process, which is sort of a measured deliberate review process of a site, site inventory analysis, which then presumably the board comes to, you know, agreement around the, basically the site inventory takes a look at the natural characteristics, the cultural charac, characteristics of the site, the layout, the essentially the buildable areas or those areas that might be considered more sensitive. Once that's determined, the applicant comes before you with a master plan similar to what we're sort of looking at here that lays out the general, uh, development patterns. Um, and then once that's approved, it, uh, translates into a full site plan review, full engineering analysis, traffic analysis, everything we were sort of just talking about. Um, so, uh, that's just a, a brief, uh, introduction of the zoning context that we're in and, uh, with that, Mr. Chair, I'll turn it back to you.
Yeah, just want, again, stress to the board that, uh, we're just looking for what they wanna do and get a general flavor of, of the situation. Uh, it, I think it's very premature to give, you know, concrete guidance at this stage, so with that, uh, we'll, it'll open it up to the applicant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Elliot Chamberlain, owner of Dunston Properties. As most of you are probably aware, this is the, what the vision was part of Dunston Crossing, which was going to be the non-residential section, the commercial section. Um, if we go back a very long time ago, when we first started Dunston Crossing, this used to be a B two zone. Uh, after we got approved and some of the zoning was changed, this became what is called a T V C zone and it's a mixed use zone. And we've been a while, uh, thinking about what we wanted to do with it, how we wanted it to look, and, uh, I joined forces with Forside Architects who's, uh, with me tonight. And we put together a vision of, uh, what is truly a mixed use plan. I think follows, uh, the context of the zone very well. Uh, it's got residential in it, uh, three different types. It's got retail, uh, hopefully a restaurant site, uh, it's got a drive-through building. Um, some of these are still visionary, a couple of these buildings, uh, we are actually talking to tenants currently. Um, so we, we understand after talking, uh, with Jay and with Dan quite a bit about the whole plan development process, and instead of skipping tonight, we thought it was still, uh, worthwhile to come in and at least have a sketch plan to, um, to get some ideas, get some feedback. Um, so I, I know Ron just said this is, this is just a sketch plan, but we are looking for, um, you know, does the board think we're on the right track? Do they think we're following the vision of the T V C zone? Um, are there things they like about it or don't like about it? Um, so with that, I'll open it back to the board and, and, uh, actually, I'd like to bring Tom Emery up from Forside Architects to kinda give you a better feel for, uh, what we did, what the buildings represent, uh, kind of a general overview of the site and, uh, then we can go from there. Thank you.
Uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Chair, Planning Board Members. My name is Tom Emery. I'm a landscape architect with Forside Architects in Falmouth. And with me is Mark Burns, uh, President and Owner of Forside Architects. Uh, Elliot came to us a number of months ago and described what his vision was and on a piece of sketch paper and so forth, we came up with, uh, what we thought was some good options and have developed this into now it's, it's a, a highly developed illustrative plan. But if you've had a chance to review the narrative that was submitted with the application, uh, we tried to describe the key components of this plan that we think makes it special. And essentially what we're trying to do is to create a brand, so when somebody comes to Dunston Village, they're not gonna rely on a pylon sign to know that they're there. They're gonna understand that this is a village and that the businesses and, and the residents of the village will have that entire village as a brand, uh, you know, almost like another section of, of, uh, town might be. But, uh, just as a quick overview, the main components of this plan, uh, are the, uh, main street spine. When you come in from Route One, there's a, there's a, uh, east-west spine, so to speak, and in the middle of that spine is what we call the town square. There'll be some sort of, uh, um, monument, a sculpture with a fountain and some landscaping to really mark the crossroads of, of, of that spine. And that spine is framed on both sides, the main street in a traditional New England main street fashion with angled on-street parking for traffic calming, wide sidewalks with street trees, mixed use, uh, will have, uh, residential on the second floor with commercial on the ground floor on one side and on the other side we may have a restaurant and other, uh, office, uh, buildings. Uh, and then, uh, we have a public square and the adjac, adjacent public garden that, that creates the north-south spine in the development. And that's flanked on the south side by, uh, commercial buildings and then on the, on the north by residential, uh, buildings. And we have a res, residential core. And Elliot talked to the, uh, the idea of the mixed, uh, residential types. We have, uh, courtyards, uh, four townhouses, and then we also have the, uh, building that I think Jay talked to earlier, which right now has thirty-six apartment units in it. And, uh, that'll be part of the ongoing discussion, uh, with the master plan. Uh, and then, uh, jumping back to Route One, we have the Route One buffer, uh, understanding the importance of the image from Route One. We don't wanna put a, uh, junkyard screen along Route One. We want something that has a mix, uh, of types of plants as well as screening certain areas using landforms to help screen areas and also to open up views because we're gonna have some attractive, many attractive views, I think, of interest, uh, to, uh, visitors and residents. And then to have two, two open spaces, one at the north end of the development and one at the south end, so if someone's walking along Route One or looking along Route One, there'll be pole-in areas where you can walk and, and rest and, and relax. And, um, that really is, is an overview, uh, of the entire development. And this is integral to all of the other development that Elliot, uh, has, uh, completed in the past and looking to in the future.
There is one other item, uh, I think Jay or you might have brought it up, about the, the number of units in a building. Um, as Tom just mentioned, one of our buildings has thirty-six unit in it, in it, and as per the town ordinance, right now the most we can do is twelve units per building unless it's age restricted. At this point, we don't want to make it age restricted. We were at the Long Range Planning Committee on Friday morning, uh, this subject got brought up and they're thinking, talking, uh, conversing about whether to change that, uh, and, and what type of parameters if they were to change that to use as a guideline. Uh, the building we're talking about is a thirty-six, uh, units of one-bedroom apartments. Um, we'd like to keep it non-age restricted, but obviously with, with the current rule, we'll have to, uh, take that into consideration as we move forward and how quickly, uh, they might move forward. So with that, if there's any questions, uh...
Well, let's find out. John?
Uh, at first glance, this is a great idea, great project. Uh, obviously there'll be a lot of details to work through later on, but conceptually, I'm all over this. Good luck.
Mike?
Thank you. Hi, Elliot. Well, um, certainly if this is, uh, gonna follow suit, as I imagine, uh, it will from your effort so far at Dunston Crossing, then there's, uh, nothing to not like about it. Um, have you, uh, thought through, um, uh, concepts or ideas a, as it relates to how you, uh, the ingress and egress of the site from Route One? Are there gonna be any kinda issues coming, uh, certainly out of the site and heading north or, you know, crossing?
Uh, at, at the time, at the time we got Dunston Crossing approved, um, I don't think there was any traffic counts from the commercial... At the time, at the time we got Dunston Crossing approved, um, I don't think there was any traffic counts from the commercial area, uh, used to determine that a, a light was not needed. So, I would imagine we would have to relook at new traffic counts with what we have on the plan and determine whether a li- light was allowed, needed, wanted, um, so that would be part of, uh, the process. My guess is that we would probably hit the right numbers for a light at, at full build-out. The question is, you know, could we, uh, in the past, what we've done is, uh, been allowed to do a certain amount of build-out and then when we hit that certain trip generation, then a light needs to be installed before any other development could occur on-site.
And, um, I, I think I would benefit by, uh, by seeing this in the context of the, the, the larger project also, because, uh, I would imagine you're going to have connectivity to what you've already started there from the other phases as far as walking?
This road actually is the phase four connection, Dunston Crossing connection to Route One, so it's being used. So when you, uh, when we make the connection from Route One over to the existing phase one, two, and three on the Broad Turn roadside, uh, this will pass right through. So, our main street here is the, is the Dunston Crossing entrance.
I know you have calculations on the left here, but, um, any, any, uh, challenges as far as, uh, having enough parking? Have you, are you, um...
No, we actually could have gone, uh, even heavier on the square footage of both residential and commercial. I allowed at the time, I kind of took the philosophy less is more, uh, we didn't want a really heavily intense site, um, not that there's nothing on the site, but, um, but yeah. Under the current conditions, we have, uh, plenty of parking, uh, under the town's current standards. And we haven't even taken into consideration, uh, reducing those by the use of shared parking between daytime and nighttime uses. So, we've taken the worst-case scenario outlook and, and we've met the parking requirements as per, uh, the ordinances today.
Um, well, well, I love it, I can't wait till this, uh, do you have a timeframe in mind? I know that, uh...
Uh, we actually, we have somebody we're currently working with on, uh, for a restaurant on this site. One of the buildings is, is specifically designed, uh, for this person and if, if that works out, they would like to be open next spring, so it would be, uh, we'd have to fast-track it.
Are you prepared tonight to like, uh, for instance, um, Building D looks like the drive-through? Uh, is that, is that like, could that be a drive-through restaurant, a drive-through bank, or that kind of idea?
Uh, it could be restaurant, bank, coffee shop, the, we have nobody specific for that particular building, but it, under the plan development in this zone, it does allow for a drive-through. So we wanted to show the capability, uh, of where it could go and taking into account, um, somebody who would want a drive-through, where might they want it to be on-site? And our thought was it would be, uh, much more preferential to be up near the front and not bring all that traffic that was strictly going in to use the drive-through to have to travel through the entire site.
Right, right, that was my comment and, uh, that's a good point.
That building roughly represents what a small bank branch, uh, a typical bank branch would be. That would be a lodge, say Dunkin' Donuts Starbucks, but it would be a typical bank branch.
Okay, all right, well, I can go on and on, but I don't want to steal, uh, time from my fellow colleagues. But thank you, thank you, Elliot.
I'm impressed. I'm always impressed. I remember back when we didn't have anything like this in Scarborough, mm.
Well, I was remembering it, I don't remember what it's like to be the easiest project on the agenda.
You know what it is, it's, it's a co- it's a comment on how, how well we've gotten, how, how much we've improved and what it is we ask for and how much you've, not you personally, but yeah, you personally, everybody has improved in terms of actually taking them on. And then coming in there and saying, okay, we're going to work with this and do the best we can with this, and this is a perfect example. You know, I mean, we really worked hard at this zoning, we knew what we wanted, and there it is. It's all very exciting and I have nothing negative to say, nothing positive to say, except I'm excited, I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, just a couple of questions, I think it looks terrific as well. And, uh, I'm just kind of curious, um, do you have, do you own the property on either side or of this?
No, I would assume you're talking here?
Yes.
No, that is the furniture company, uh, that building right there? And then you have just to the north of this property is, uh, that seafood, walk-in seafood, um, takeout place?
Oh, yeah, okay, okay.
Right across from the Thai restaurant?
And the...
But no, we don't own either one to answer your question.
Okay, uh, the only other question I have is on the, uh, on H five, you know, the apartments?
Yep.
Do you have any idea where you, where you're going to market those at in terms of, um, rent?
Uh, we don't right now, um, we know they're going to be one-bedroom apartments, I don't know whether they're going to be four hundred square feet or eight hundred square feet.
Upscale, well, I would assume.
Um, I, I'm, I'm not even prepared to say that.
Okay.
But they will be market rate, they won't be subsidized, um...
Yeah. Okay, I mean, that's, that's all I have.
My, um, I, I'm excited, one, this is a nice plan, um, and my only concern, the only thing that jumped out at me was, uh, your entrance from Route One coming in and then you have that, you know, slanted parking going in. And what I've seen a lot, my, my wife is from New York, so I've gotten to spend some times in these very narrow streets with slanted parking, and as people back right out, it causes extensive stacking. And I'm worried on Route One coming this way, people trying to turn into the development, one or two people trying to back out of those parking spaces could, could cause, in theory, some delays down Route One. And so I would just ask you to look at that area and, you know, by using my very scientific pen, it looked like it was maybe a hundred and eighty feet from the entrance when you get to the, you know, uh, maybe a hundred and twenty before you get... Which, you know, what, ten cars? That's a lot of cars, I understand, but let's think, you know, Christmas time and people are, look, you know, if you've got shops in there and it's a beautiful place to walk around, I think you need to be prepared for, um, some traffic turning in there. So that would be my one comment, is, uh, that's on Building E.
So you're mainly looking at the first building on the right as you pull in would really be the biggest concern of that?
That is the bigger concern. And that's just because of the traffic flow coming from Route One. I think, you know, while it's nice that you're going to have residents all around there utilizing, and I think with, you know, the addition of restaurants and possibly drive-throughs, you're going to see more than just your, your localized residents utilizing this area, especially if it turns out as nice as your plan indicates. So, um, that would be the one area I was, I was having any concerns with at this time, but good luck to you guys, thanks.
I just got a couple of comments, um, I, my ears went up when you talked about, uh, what Roger was asking about the, uh, what the price is going to be for those units. And I like the idea and the reason why I like that, it's not going to be subsidized, is because there are three or four projects on the board right now that will be subsidized in that same general area. So I think this would be a good mixture of diversification, you know, types of people coming into Scarborough, and I think that's, that's a positive. I too am pretty excited about, uh, uh, the overall general plan, uh, for the, uh, for the structure and, uh, um, I look forward to, uh... Oh, I do have one other question, and maybe I misunderstood, is there going to be some commercial, which residential above commercial?
Yes, uh, if you look at the two, what is Building E and Building G, the, the possibility of, one, you may have studio apartments that are separate from anything downstairs, but living space above the first floor.
Okay, so they would be studio apartments?
Yes, or, uh, possibly an opportunity to have three or four, uh, live-work environments. We've actually talked to one person, uh, that may be interested in having a shop on the first floor and a condo-type apartment on the second floor, that they could travel, you know, up and down in the same unit.
Okay. That's just something that caught my, uh, my ear when it, when it was being expressed. Well, like the rest of my board members, I, I look forward to, uh, uh, as we go forward and I'll be curious to hear how you make out with the Long Range Planning Committee as far as, uh, uh, the exception is concerned, uh, as far as the units approved. And, uh, do you know when you expect to get an answer on that?
Uh, I don't, and I was not the only one, there was actually two other people that were looking for that, uh, uh, one of them was actually headed towards the root of the contract zone to try to make their issue work. Another one, uh, just like you said, it, um, in the Dunston area that had the same situation, um, were hoping to put more units in one building. I, I would assume that even if it didn't come in time, that it might not be an issue until we actually move forward with the building permit of that building? Is that correct, Jay, or...
It would need to, the zoning would need to be in place before the board could do any approval for a building like that, so, I mean, you could show a building, say you're going to put twelve units in there and then once that changes, you have to come back.
Or it should get approved with the idea that it is age-restricted and then take the age restriction off if that was to be listed.
You could do that as well and, you know, that would then, as you sort of talked about before, age restriction usually changes a traffic analysis, so that may need to be sort of revisited, so... Um, but certainly I think, you know, and depending on what your timeframe is for the overall project, I think the board could also look at a phased, you know, you could look at sort of getting through the plan development first two pa- uh, excuse me, first two phases of the master plan process, the site inventory and master plan, have the general layout.
Yep.
You know, maybe it's, maybe it's this, maybe it's something else, and then coming in with site plan in a, in a phased environment, so where you know you want to do buildings, you know, E, G, and B, say, you know, in the next year, all right, you start there and then you sort of build, work out from there. So, that's another approach you could take if H, you know, that zoning question on H is still out there, that could be a placeholder on the master plan, you know, call it age-restricted, and then if, if when that's changed, then that's easy enough, so...
Okay.
I think that's easier work our way around.
Anything else from us?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Be on time next time. See, but I'm only acting chair tonight too, and I like to push things. Okay. Next on the agenda, Tom Planters' report.
Uh, yeah, uh, two items I'd like to report, uh, one, uh, I think an email, plan board members have seen, but, uh, also for members of the general public who may be watching. The Long Range Planning Committee, Planning Department is, uh, going to be conducting a Higgins Beach code repair workshop, being framed as really looking at the zoning in the Higgins Beach area. To the discussion we're having early on, a couple of our earlier applications, there's a number of, in, in our beach community, house lots that are non-conforming and, um, it's really taking a look at, you know, sort of the history of redevelopment in those areas and is the zoning, current zoning context the right one, or maybe there's other alternatives. It's a three-day event, it's really sort of considered, you know, the, the planning workshop through the weekend of June fifth, sixth, and seventh, there are activities throughout the day. So we will be having a, uh, a presence on the web so people can sort of see when those events are. People are encouraged to drop in anytime that they're available. If you see an event that works for you, but maybe, you know, the, the, uh, the, the, uh, the agenda for that event doesn't fit exactly what we want to talk about, that's okay. People are encouraged to drop in whenever they can and are available throughout that weekend. So I just want to make note of that and I'll probably bring that to your attention at your next meeting, which is right before that. The other item I want to touch on is, board members may recall a few meetings ago, probably up to three or four meetings ago, uh, the Rusparik Construction Company was before you with consideration for a sketch plan, a subdivision sketch plan off of Memory Lane. It's called the Thiberge subdivision, board members expressed an interest in conducting a site walk out there. I received an email today asking, uh, to poll the board, uh, as to when you'd be, uh, able to do that. So, I think as part of the survey I'll be sending around, I think what I'll do is I'll set up a type of, a web poll, uh, that I'll send around to you, I'll add that one to the time of the day. So, you know, I would anticipate we'll probably be out in the woods for an hour, probably two, uh, when we do that walk, so just keep that in line. So those are the two items that I had, I report.
Any administrative amendment report?
Uh, yep, have one item to report, at one fifty-two U S Route One, this is the site, uh, right at the intersection of Route One and Portland Farms Road, where Lowe's is marketed as the front building and there's a, uh, a multi-tenant building sort of out back. The multi-tenant building on the Portland Farms side, uh, the planning board back in the day approved a drive-through, uh, location there, uh, was for a dry cleaner. Andrew Scoggan Bank has doing some commercial lending out there, they made some slight modifications to that drive-through. Uh, basically what they did is they pulled it back on the building to create a little more queue length, uh, in there. Um, and so, uh, the board chairman, uh, provided a administrative amendment on it, um, and that is all I have on that item.
Correspondence.
Received all the items for the items, uh, you know, the agenda items, uh, don't know that board members received anything additional to that.
Planning board comments?
Request? Comments, requests?
Comments, uh...
Um, I would like us to ask applicants when they provide stuff for packets that they put on those types of paper, sorry, but that's my thing, say the truth.
And then plant...
I have a, a couple, I have a couple of things. One, on, uh, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-eighth, uh, there was a joint meeting of the Transportation Committee and Scarborough ACE team, uh, dealing with crosswalk policy and complete streets policy. And we were also joined by Stephanie Carver and Rick Hobson of, uh, General, uh, Portland, uh, Greater Portland Clog. Mike Shaw was there as the Public Works Director, uh, and Paul, uh, Niehoff of PAX. And we came up with a tentative, uh, because there was no crosswalk policy, uh, what people, somebody might have to do with, and this is just a draft, an application for pedestrian crosswalk, if you want one in your neighborhood or business or so forth. And the other issue is, uh, that we dealt with is a, uh, complete streets policy, which is very complicated and, and very much in its preliminary, uh, phases. So, that was then, and then this past week, there was supposedly a joint meeting of the board members and the council, uh, on a contract zone application. Avesta Housing is, uh, looking, uh, uh, to build, uh, some, um, subsidized housing, uh, at the South Gate House on five seventy-seven U S Route One. Unfortunately, um, we were way down on the list and some of us had other obligations, so we couldn't stay. I know Mike stayed and Roger stayed and, uh, um, let's see, Corey was also there. I caught a, a tail end of it on, on TV, but, um, my request is that when we have these joint meetings, that, uh, we're told ahead of time where we're going to be on the list. Because that's asking a lot of all of us, uh, to, to give up more time than we already do. You know, that's just my, my opinion, um, about, uh, future meetings of the council and, and the board. You may, others of you may think differently, but that's, that's my opinion. Any other comments? Do I hear any, oh, I do, thank you all for indulging me in sitting in this chair tonight, I, I appreciate that very much. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Well done, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
All in favor? We, we are adjourned.